Please be seated. Good afternoon, members and viewing public. This is the meeting of the full council which is being held at Pons Porch International Sports Centre. Please, can I ask the Director of Legal and Governance to announce the housekeeping arrangements, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. To help keep everyone safe, please maintain social distancing at all times. Please wear a face covering at all times within the venue unless you have an exemption. It can be removed once seated, but you may wish to leave it on. Hand sanitizer will be available for you to use. Please remain seated as much as possible during the meeting and do not congregate around exits and entrances. Follow any signage which is provided, such as one-way systems, to help keep you safe. If you have any concerns or are unsure, please ask a member of staff. In the event of the fire alarm sounding, please take instruction from staff and stewards at the assembly points at the front of the building. Can I request everyone to switch mobile devices to silent mode? Roaming microphones will be used for councillors wishing to speak from the main floor of the meeting room. Please allow time for the democratic services officer to reach you before you begin to speak so that you can be heard clearly. The meeting today will be webcast and the recording will also be available for people to view later through the council's website. Photography, video and sound recording of the meeting is permitted, but the Lord Mayor does have discretion to withdraw or suspend this permission if the recording is disrupting the conduct of the meeting, is being undertaken in a manner which could capture personal information or if a member of the public participating objects to being recorded. Any member of the public due to speak at the meeting who does not wish to be recorded should say so at the start of their speech and the Lord Mayor will suspend the permission to record their contribution. Thank you.
Thank you, Gillian. I shall conclude these housekeeping announcements by stating that this meeting is scheduled to finish at 5.30. But I propose to adjourn the meeting at an appropriate point in the proceedings to give members the opportunity to take a comfort break. Before commencing the formal items of business on the agenda, we have a newly elected councillor for Firth Park Ward and she is to be introduced to this council meeting. Can I call upon councillor Abdul Kajoom to speak? Good afternoon, councillor Belbin, and congratulations, and I hope you enjoy your first meeting. We are now at the item two on the agenda, apologies for absence. We have the following. David Barker, Tony Dams, Terry Fox, Christine Gilligan, councillor Bob McCann, councillor Downing, councillor Jack Scott, councillor Sophie Wilson and councillor O'Rourke. Are there any further apologies? Thank you. Item three on the agenda is declarations of interest. This item of business is to enable members of the council to declare an interest in any item on the agenda. When declaring an interest, the member should refer to the item of business, state whether it is pecuniary or personal interest, and outline the reasons for the declaration. Does any member wish to declare an interest? Councillor Lodge.
Lord Mayor, I declare an interest in the notice of motion number 1 of the Royal British Legion. As I am a member of the Royal British Legion.
Thank you, councillor Lodge. I can't see your face. Councillor Fox.
Thank you. I want to declare an interest on notice of motion number, sorry, nine. I am also a member of the British Legion, also honorary member of the HMS Sheffield and as supporter of the Normandy Veterans. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor McGowan.
Thank you, same as Denise.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Wood, over here. Oh, is somebody down there? Councillor Wood?
The same notice of motion, Lord Mayor. I'm a member of a number of organisations involved with veterans and the armed forces.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'd like to declare, just for transparency, an interest in the petition because I'm a council-nominated observer on the Sheffield City Trust. Thank you.
Councillor Weatherall.
On the motion number nine, I'm a member of the RLB.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I wish to declare a personal interest in item seven. I'm one of the founder shareholders of Sheffield Renewables and that name is actually mentioned in one of the amendments. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Masters. Councillor Diamond, sorry, my eyesight's not that good, you're quite a long way away. Can you, oh, you've got her.
Yeah, I'm also a shareholder in Sheffield Renewables and an employee of City of Sanctuary, which might come up as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more? Councillor Belbin?
I'm also a shareholder in Sheffield Renewables.
A third time, and are there any other items of interest? Okay, we'll move on then. We now move to public questions and petitions and any other communications. Public questions can be asked and petitions can be presented at the council meetings. Questions or petitions are required to be submitted two clear days in advance of these Covid safety meetings to enable public attendance at the meetings to be managed in a safe way. For this meeting, there are three petitions and, sorry, there will be three petitions and questions will be taken from one member of the public. A period of 60 minutes is allowed for this item. Finally, we're going to, finally, there is one further petition which will be debated at the end of this item of business. This is referred to on the agenda of this meeting. Can I call upon the Chief Exec to announce petitions? And may I request that petitioners be brief to keep within the time limits of three minutes? May I also request the executive members keeping within the maximum time of five minutes when responding to these petitions? May I also ask questioners and the executive members to keep their responses short and succinct? Thank you in advance for your cooperation. Chief Exec.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I've received a joint electronic and paper petition containing 448 signatures requesting a pedestrian crossing on Salter Lane near Osborne Road and Brinkliff Gardens. Helen Brown wishes to address the council and it's recommended that the petition be referred to councillor Douglas Johnson.
Good afternoon, everyone. Myself and some other parents with children.
We can't hear you. Can someone have a look at the microphone?
Good afternoon, can you hear me now? Myself and some other parents with children attending the Hunter's Bar School set up this petition because we believe there is a need for another pedestrian crossing on Salter Lane. A child was involved in an accident on the upper stretch of this road earlier this year. Thankfully, it wasn't serious on that occasion, but we feel that it is only a matter of time before a pedestrian sustains a more serious injury. Many people we spoke with while collecting signatures for this petition reported having had a near miss on this stretch and we feel that sooner or later, these near misses will convert into a more serious collision if nothing is done. The local school's catchment spans Salter Lane, which is now a main arterial road into the city, especially at peak times when motorists are trying to avoid Echolsall and Abidale Roads. We would like to see local active travel journeys prioritised over those of the predominantly out-of- neighbourhood motorists using Salter Lane. Both Echolsall and Abidale Roads have several pedestrian crossings. Salter Lane has just won a junction road that is totally overwhelmed during rush hours. The funneling effect onto it means that pedestrians are forced to walk along the most unpleasant and polluted routes alongside lines of idling cars. Another crossing on Salter Lane between Sharrow and Nether Edge will mean that pedestrians could avoid walking right next to the lines of idling traffic that is spewing out exhaust fumes, especially at a child's height. It would also allow local schools to recommend better park-and-stride locations if there were another safe crossing point on this road. As well as the three schools in the vicinity, there are several nurseries, a Dan School, a pub and a recently approved pottery school. A crossing would benefit the users of all of them. In addition, there are two large new housing developments off the top of Salter Lane, the Bluecoats Development and the Baldwin Site. The local population and therefore the number of active travellers in the area has increased significantly to justify improvements to the existing pedestrian infrastructure. Surely this is what the community infrastructure levy should be used to fund. For those joining Salter Lane at Brinkliff Gardens, Osborne Road, Stetson Road, Hunter House and Roche Roads, the diversion to the existing side crossing is half a mile. This may seem insignificant to able-bodied adults, but for the elderly, disabled and those with children, bikes or buggies, it is a significant obstacle to walking between Sharrow and Nether Edge. By just looking on a map, it may appear to be an easy diversion, but in reality, for those of us walking around the area, it is anything but. The half-mile diversion is difficult and dangerous because cars are parked on both pavements, sometimes blocking them entirely. Combined with parked cars, some stretches become impassable on bin collection days without the pedestrian physically moving the bins aside or stepping out into the road. The wide-flared junctions of Brinkliff Gardens and Osborne Roads are themselves difficult to cross as traffic is often turning into and out of them at speed. The pavement on Salter Lane has some extremely narrow sections that are often covered with slippery leaves. This and the camber of the pavement means that any stumble or mistake with a bike, buggy or scooter puts a pedestrian or child straight into the road where cars regularly travel at speed. There are families in this area who drive the less than 1.5 mile journey to school because they believe it to be too dangerous or too stressful to walk. And as it stands, it's quicker and shorter to drive this journey than to walk it if a pedestrian must divert to the only crossing in the vicinity at Junction Road. This shouldn't be the case. Doing the right thing and travelling both actively and sustainably should not be an inconvenient misery, nor should it present a risk to life. We believe that the council should be prioritising active travel and assisting and rewarding those residents wanting to replace their shorter and necessary car journeys for the benefit of all. The school run is an obvious example of this type of journey. Sheffield's own director of public health, Greg Fell, has recently made a powerful case for creating a walking and cycling culture in his recent WordPress article. If we really want to encourage people off the roads and to reduce carbon emissions, we need to make it safer, shorter and easier for pedestrians. A pedestrian crossing on this section of road would be life-transforming for the people who regularly travel by foot in this area. This petition, which has garnered 450 signatures, demonstrates a clear local demand for one. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. May I call upon councillor Douglas Johnson to respond?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you for bringing that petition. Actually, you've just given a really powerful message as to why we need a lot more traffic calming, road safety measures. So I am really pleased to hear that and, you know, thank you. Because it needs to be said and it needs to be said because roads like Salter Lane are, just as you've described them. The short answer is, I'm going to say that, yes, there's a need for crossing there. No, we're not going to provide one because there's not enough money. It's not there's not enough money, there is money, but there are other roads that are in even worse states. But actually, for anyone who can picture Salter Lane, yeah, it's a pretty unpleasant trip to go to Hunter's Bar School, for instance. It's a pretty bad trip at any time of day. It's not a nice road. It's not a nice road to walk along and it's certainly not one, a good one to cross there. I know you were in touch before because you were asking about the records of the data there. Quite important that you said, actually, there were near misses and an accident earlier this year. What I was going to say is that it is really important that people right across the city do report accidents, near misses, whenever they happen because it's really important that that data is collected because that actually is the basis of deciding where is the priority for getting the next pedestrian crossing, the next bit of traffic calming. Without that data, that's largely why things don't take place there. We recently got, you know, an update, so at least the 2020 data is on the official record now. The crash early this year in 2021, that won't be on the record yet, but it will be in due course. So there's a constant review of what's going on there. The sad thing is that there are so many locations that are actually far worse than that. There's a whole list of things right across the city and, of course, they're not spread evenly. There are far worse places in the more deprived areas, frankly. And we've seen that with, you know, the real tragedy this week of the woman in Darnell who was killed going to collect her kid from school. And, you know, that's the real tragedy there. That place, I understand, there actually, there weren't lots of reported near misses and yet, from the start, everyone knew how dangerous that road was. It's so important to get things on the record there. So, and something about that, really good to raise it. Just when you were speaking, I did wonder whether it's worth us going back to Hunter's Bar Infant School, which I know is a school that's really on top of doing what it can to promote active travel and see whether there's any further scope for things like walking buses or whatever. So another thought, and I may come back to you on that one. But that's the answer for now. So again, thanks for bringing the petition, making the point that we need more road safety measures.
Thank you. I've received an electronic petition containing 98 signatures requesting road safety measures at the junction of Noel Lane, Huber Avenue and Hall Lane. Anne Rowan wishes to address the council and again, it's recommended that the petition be referred to councillor Douglas Johnson, cooperative executive member for climate change, environment and transport.
Thank you, I'm Anne Rowan, I live on Noel Lane and I walk, I actually walk along Noel Lane and pass the same place on Salter Lane that we've just heard about. I'm here to talk to you about a petition I raised about the junction where Noel Lane dips down the hill towards Echolsall Road and it's joined by Hall Lane and Huber Avenue, which arise fairly steeply. And there's been a crash at that junction recently. It actually occurred 10 minutes before I walked past there with my two-year-old child to go to nursery. And it's a point where people gather to meet to walk to Echolsall Primary School. It's also on the route to Silverdale School and High Stores School. So a lot of people around eight to nine o'clock in the morning are using that junction, crossing it and going in various directions. My neighbours who live on the corner where the postbox is on that junction report many near misses that they hear and see from their homes that maybe aren't reported. But this particular day, this crash had occurred because someone had overshot the junction and gone into oncoming traffic and those cars ended up on the corner by the postbox where we stand across the road and where many other people stand or meet to walk to school. Echolsall Primary School actually have that location as part of their safe route to school, walking map. They say that's a good place to start a walking bus from, which I think is not the case at the moment. The South Yorkshire Police have done a speed survey in the last month on Noel Lane approaching this junction, which is great. They found a mean speed of 29 miles an hour, it's a 30 mile an hour road. But we believe that that speeding is not necessarily the problem in this case. It's to do with the geometry of the junction where people come up Hall Lane, it's very steep, they don't want to stop and they overshoot the junction and come into oncoming traffic along Noel Lane. So what we would like to ask for is, rather than measures to reduce speed, which would also be welcome, is that there is a move to reduce cars parking in the immediate vicinity of the junction, so double yellow lines to stop to improve visibility, and a pedestrian barrier around the corner of the junction where the postbox is, which seems to be the main place that cars come off the road and onto the pavement and potentially collide with each other. Thank you.
Councillor Johnson, will you respond, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And again, thank you, Anne. You've just heard what I've said to our friendly colleague there, so I won't go for that again. But I was just thinking whilst you were speaking, and obviously, again, roughly where this junction is, the fact is that, you know, the roads up there are pretty wide compared to other parts of the city. You can see why, you know, it's not being seen as a priority. But she said something very interesting there, which I hadn't quite picked up on before, and talking about the geometry of the junction is the particularly unusual feature. And I was going to say that, you know, it's a bit of a no-hoper of a case for these sort of really tight priorities for road safety measures and it's not going to happen. And I was going to say, I'm not even going to ask the officers to take their work away from something else and work on this, you know, if it's not going to get the priority. But given that you said that, I think actually it would be worth me asking them if they can have a look at what can be done at, you know, possibly fairly modest cost there that might alleviate some of the worst effects of it. So, yeah, that's quite a helpful suggestion. Again, you mentioned that, you know, the crashes via bad driving earlier this year, really important to get those recorded with the police so they will eventually show up on the stats. And it means that the council will have available to it a proper record of the activity that makes roads dangerous there. Really encouraging to know that the school's on board with actually planning, you know, proper walking, cycling routes to school. And again, it's, there is a danger if, you know, people are trapped in this paradox that children are driven to school because the roads are too dangerous, thereby making it more dangerous for other children. And if we don't teach children now how to get to school without relying on a metal box on wheels, then they will end up being the motorists of the future who perpetuate the problem. So again, thanks yet again for bringing this petition to the council and highlighting these really important issues.
Finally, I've received an electronic petition containing 139 signatures requesting the council to support the electricity bill. Matt Killey wishes to address the council and it's recommended that the petition be referred to councillor Paul Turpin, cooperative executive member for inclusive economy, jobs and skills.
Good afternoon, council. I'm Matthew Killey from Sheffield Hallam. I'm presenting petition today asking for the council to declare support for the local electricity bill. This parliamentary bill aims to restructure the energy market. It would make it viable for local communities to generate and sell renewable energy and it needs your support. Council, I do not come to talk to you in an easy time for our city. Today is the first day of this Tory government's cruel cuts to universal credit. Tens of thousands of people in this city will receive £1,000 less a year. Last week, the government ended the furlough scheme affecting another 10,000 people in our city. We also have an energy crisis. Often expects an average customer to see their bill rise by £139 a year. The people affected are young and old. They are working people, they are families with children. No one in our city should be forced to make the choice between eating and heating this winter. These are our friends and our neighbours. At the same time, we have a climate crisis fuelled by fossil fuels, which we can't ignore. We need to create jobs, we need to deal with a climate emergency and we need to make our people's lives better. The local electricity bill seeks to rewrite the electricity market rules. The current rules are outdated and favour the big six. They stifle competition and innovation by imposing exorbitant fixed costs of over £1 million to be a supply company, that figure from the Institute for Public Policy Research. The bill would establish a right to supply and make the costs of being an energy supplier proportional to the scale of the business. Imagine for a moment an energy market not dominated by the big six. Instead of the 50 providers that we have in the UK, imagine that we had 1,000 suppliers. Imagine that most of them were local, community-owned suppliers supplying renewable energy. Council, you don't have to imagine it. You can travel to Germany and see such a market in action today. This is what the local electricity bill would enable. Our city has its share of problems, but it also has some incredibly innovative people. It has people who are community-minded, people who would set up energy projects or invest in community shares to enable them. If only the market rules weren't rigged against them. We would gain a more diverse and resilient energy system, relying less on imports from overseas. More money would be spent, more money spent on energy would circulate locally, creating jobs and a stronger local economy. It's exactly the kind of community wealth building that we need. The bill has declared support from 96 local authorities and county councils. 262 MPs have declared support, including three from Sheffield. That's Olivia Blake, Paul Blomfield and Clive Betts. And yet Sheffield City Council still has not done so. Council, I urge you to accept this petition and to declare support for the local electricity bill. This city can boost its economy, improve the lives of our citizens and reduce our emissions. Thank you.
Councillor Turpin, can you respond, please?
Thanks, Lord Mayor. Thanks for bringing the petition to us. It's really struck me, it's got one of those unusual names, do you support your electricity bill? Well, no, it's too bloody dear, turn the kitchen light off. But I don't mean to make light of it. It is a bill that we would support and I'm more than happy to contact the people that you've asked us to contact. It's also mentioned in a motion later on on energy that I'm sure you're aware of and it's absolutely something we're looking into. We were discussing it in a meeting the other night this week about what options we might have in some new work that's going on in the city to include some community energy. So, yeah, it's absolutely on the agenda and at the front of our minds. Thanks.
Thank you. Can I call upon Elaine Bird to come to the microphone and ask her question? I may remind questioners of my earlier statement requesting that they be as brief as possible when asking questions and that the executive members keep their responses short and succinct. This is to ensure that as many people as possible are able to ask questions on this agenda today. Thank you. Is Elaine Bird there? Okay, Elaine?
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, I'll be as brief as possible.
Sorry, but can't hear you.
Turn it closer, is that better? Thank you. With reference to the possible closure of Princeton Street, we would like to know what and who the council thinks the city centre is for. How do they expect Sheffielders to access local businesses and services? And were Addison Blue given any assurances that bus and traffic would be removed or limited before they agreed to come to Sheffield? If the city centre is for everyone in Sheffield, not just the fit and able, then everyone needs good and easy access, preferably not by expensive taxes. Council representatives repeatedly tell us that retail is not the future for the city centre as retail is moving online, but Leeds and Manchester and even Nottingham seem to think differently. We have a few local banks now, so people need to access the city centre for banking too. We have the Millennium Gallery and Library plus lots of other services. How does the council expect Sheffielders to access these services? Established local businesses are suffering the loss of trade and are being told on a daily basis that regular customers won't be coming again as it is too difficult for them to reach us. Cycling to work may be possible for council employees who will no doubt be provided with secure storage for their bikes. This is not an option for many, if not most, of the employers in the city centre. Can you please comment on the recent report that the council also provides over 300 parking? Can you please comment on the recent report that the council also provides over 300 parking spaces for their employees? Could the council outland their plans for bringing trade back to the city centre in the short term? Many small traders will not survive waiting until the city centre developments are complete. It took us years to recover, if we ever did, after the tram works decimated our businesses. This was a prime example of what happens when access to the city centre is restricted. Please don't repeat that experience again. We realise that the council wishes to promote active travel, but surely that does not mean only active travel in the city centre. At the moment, almost all buses journeys have an element of active travel that people don't necessarily want. Those with mobility issues and other disabilities do not just include the elderly, but affect young people too. A parent pushing a double buggy up Norfolk Street will not find it easy. Suggestions to use a bus stop almost a quarter of a mile away from the city centre as an alternative to the Arundel Gate bus stop is not an easy option for many people. We are not asking for all traffic to return to the city centre, just buses, which we have been repeatedly told are the green alternative to the car. If people with mobility and other issues cannot easily use public transport, if they have a car, they will be tempted to use that instead, invoking the law of unintended consequences. As city centres, we have seen footfall decrease over lockdown, and now we are being told on an almost daily basis that many of our customers who have been coming for decades will no longer come because of transport difficulties. Taylor's Barbers has been in the same position for 110 years. Their footfall, their business is down 40% and shows no signs of recovering. Surrey Street parking is almost always full, with idling cars waiting for a space, double parking and parking on loading bays. Our council is aware that if you have the money, you can park all day there. This probably accounts for the preponderance of expensive cars we see. This also makes a decrease in the actual number of people able to use these spaces. Will you please think about removing this iniquitous facility? Disabled people can only park for three hours, that should be the limit for everyone. Finally, my cousin was 92 the last time she came to the city centre to shop in Marks and Spencer's, something that she considered to be a real treat. I would like that opportunity to be available to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your question. May I call upon councillor Douglas Johnson, executive member for Climate Change, Environment and Transport, to respond to that question, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you, Mrs Bird, for bringing that in. Again, it's quite a nice summary of some of the issues there. And as you know, from our discussion recently and talking to the people at Taylor's, there is a lot of balancing to be done there. And this is essentially the difficult position that we're in, trying to balance up the needs of all those different people. Interestingly, you made the point, you asked the question of who is it for, who are the people that we're trying to cater for? And of course, in the 110 years that you mentioned since Taylor's opened up the shop, things have changed quite a lot. And in particular, of course, the city centre is now very much more of a residential district than it was, say, 30, 40 years ago. There's 20,000 or so people who would actually live directly in the city centre. And of course, that necessarily changes the whole essence of retail and services that are provided in the city centre. It's changed in recent years immeasurably, and not just over the pandemic, even though that's been really critical too. But of course, it's not just for city centre residents, it's for people citywide and from further afield that we want to attract into the city centre. There needs to be a good whole-scale bus network and a tram network in particular, bringing people into the city. And I know you talked about the disruption caused by the tram when it was being built in the 1990s. But the fact is, actually, now we have finally got that done, and businesses recovered from that, the trams are really, really important asset for the city, really important to maintain that into the future as being the clean and more comfortable and relatively affordable form of long-distance mass transit. We need to support that. And we do need to support buses, and what's happened is that the schemes that have been put in now, so originally done to deal with the social distancing, allowing more space in the city centre for people to walk and get round on cycles and wheelchairs and scooters even, it has also had a big improvement on the buses. Those changes have rationalised the buses, so they can get through the city centre so much more quickly. And that is a good thing, because you know the old thing about saying that, yeah, well you're waiting in Winkerbank or something and you wait ages for a bus to come and then two come at once. That is because they bunch up in the city centre in particular. And with the congestion that was there before with buses continually going down Leopold Street, Princeton Street, down to the moor, at Snail's Pace, that bottled them up. Releasing that has made big improvements. And you don't see those improvements in the city centre, you see those in places like Winkerbank and Low Edges, where actually the reliability of the network really makes a difference. That's one thing, to encourage people to come in to the city centre by bus and by tram. Realistically, we're talking about hundreds of thousands of people in Sheffield, they can't all drive into the city centre and park on Surrey Street, it's just not realistic, it's just not going to happen. So then there is the question about who you select to have that option and who you don't, that gets really difficult. And I think probably we saw the issue the other day when we were talking outside on Surrey Street, and there was that bloke there just sitting in his car, smoking away with this toddler in there, running the engine for about 20 minutes, and it's quite instructive, wasn't it, just to see that sort of behaviour? Eventually got up and decided to go and get a ticket to park. Does that sort of person really help the ambience of Surrey Street? Does it really help any of the businesses there? Well, it doesn't. So, you know, there is a real issue there about making sure that the people who genuinely need to get access into the city centre can do that, and the spaces aren't all taken up by people like that bloke who frankly didn't. Just finally, you mentioned the parking spaces for council employees and councillors, it was featured in The Star recently. To be fair, some of our staff do actually need cars for some reason for carrying out their job, and, you know, we're not trying to pretend that everything can be done without a car. A lot more can be done. It's interesting, we're seeing parking wardens and PCSOs to some extent using e-bikes now they're available, makes them much more adaptable. But some people do need that. It's only right that the council as an employer provides people with the tools for their job. But when it comes to councillors, actually, you'll be interested, in our budget proposal last year, we did propose that councillors don't have an entitlement to have their parking reimbursed in the city centre unless they've actually got a blue badge and have a genuine disability-related need to have that. So, I don't know if you know that, I thought it might be of interest to you. Thanks anyway, you make good points.
councillor Johnson, I am tempted to ask the question if she feels she's had a question answered, because from where I'm sat, I'd think you avoided it.
I can speak for longer if you like.
Well, please do if you're prepared to answer the question, we'll move on. We're now going to move on. The council petition scheme requires that petitions containing over 5,000 signatures from individuals who live or work or study in Sheffield be subject to the debate of the council meeting. 25 minutes are allowed for this item. An electronic petition containing 40,000 signatures asking to let the comedian Roy Chubby Brown perform at the Sheffield City Hall has been received. In view of the number of signatures, I have agreed to accept this as a qualify for, I'm sorry, as a qualifying for this petition. Further details of the petition is set out in the council summons. May I call upon Hayley Madden to present this petition on behalf of the petitioners? You have three minutes to do this.
Over 7,000 within the postal code have signed my petition. Speaking on behalf of those that have signed, I urge you all to consider reversing the decision that a number of yourselves and Mr Snelling have made with regards to the act of Roy Chubby Brown. Fans of Mr Vazey's act should be able to attend such shows at the city hall, as we are also the taxpayers that fund such venues. Not everyone will have the same taste in comedy, along with music and other types of entertainment, which has also been shown at the said venue too recently. It's not just fans of Mr Vazey's act that have signed, but those who equally believe that those who wish to attend his shows and future ones should have the choice and freedom to do so at the Sheffield City Hall. Are you also aware of the statement that Mr Vazey made with regards, sorry, I'm a bit nervous?
Just take your time, don't worry.
All right, thank you, Mayor. With regards to the protest in Whitby, if not, I suggest you read. At the end of the day, Roy Chubby Brown is just an act. It's behind closed doors and folk know what his material consists of that choose to attend. It really cannot be as offensive as the smaller minority are making out. I know of folk from different nationalities, creeds and sexual preferences that have attended his shows and continue to do so. If Mr Vazey's act is that offensive, then why do folk continue to see the said act? To conclude, are you also aware that Mr Vazey employs two homosexual gentlemen, in which one has worked alongside him for 30 years and the other one four? He also employs three women too. Mr Vazey's good friend, Mr Vazey's good friend Tony is a gentleman of Jamaican origin. If Mr Vazey was the radiant homophobe misogynist and racist that a minority of folk complain, would he employ the said individuals? Most importantly, would they stick around if so? Surely councillors that have been voted in are there to listen to their community, not to dictate and promote their own personal views if they don't agree with something? It's a comedy show that cannot possibly offend anyone. Those who choose to attend the act of Roy Chubby Brown know exactly what they are going to see with the sole purpose of having a good laugh. After the past year and a half, that's exactly what we need, regardless of what or who the act is. Thank you for listening.
And thank you, Hayley, for that. So, we're going to move to, I call on the deputy leader of the council, councillor Grokot to respond. You have up to five minutes, councillor.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you, Hayley, for bringing your petition today. I think it would be really important to start by putting the record straight. Sheffield City Council have not made any decision in relation to this matter. The decision to not allow Roy Chubby Brown to appear at the Sheffield City Hall was made by Sheffield International Venues, which is a charitable trust which is independent of the city council. The building itself is a public building, but the people who run and organise the events are separate to the council. Therefore, the council has not made the decision, as you stated in the presentation that you've just given, to stop Roy Chubby Brown from appearing there. Neither can the council reverse the decision, that is a matter for Sheffield International Venues. So I think it's really important that you do understand that that is the correct position and that that is where we are. Having said all of that, myself and councillor Fox and other councillors have been asked for our view on whether or not we agree with the position that Sheffield International Venues took. And I can say, speaking personally, because that's all I can do here, I agree wholeheartedly with the decision that they did make. Sheffield, we are a very proud city, we are cosmopolitan, we are diverse, we are very forthright individuals and people, we are a great city to live in. And it's important to me as an individual that we respect and we are always polite and well-meaning and well-mannered to everyone. No one is suggesting that Roy Chubby Brown cannot appear and cannot perform his act in this city. There are plenty of private venues where this act could take place. So it's not that he can't come here, the fact is that an organisation has decided that they don't want his act there, and certainly I, as the deputy leader of this council, agree with that position. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Grokot. May I call upon councillor Martin Smith, shadow executive member for the city's futures, developments, culture, regeneration, to speak. You have up to two minutes, councillor Smith.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Like councillor Grokot, I want to make my position quite clear to begin with. I've never seen Chubby Brown's act, so I went online and had a look at one of his performances. I thought it was really unpleasant, and, you know, there's no way that I would go to one of his acts. But I'm not going to impose my view on anybody else. That's just a personal view, I'm not going. Lord Mayor, I want to highlight the actions of Sheffield City Trust, because whatever side of the debate you're on, they've done a, by accepting and then cancelling the booking, they've done a spectacularly good job of upsetting everybody. And they've generated a lot of publicity for Sheffield, whether you think it's good or bad, it hasn't been great. They've upset everybody. And, Lord Mayor, this is the latest in a series of poor judgements, I think, from the trust, going back over the past two years. For example, we had an auditor's report that raised serious concerns about their financial management. We've had a whole series of maintenance issues about how that's managed at venues that are owned by the council. We've had Sheffield council tax money being used to prop up loss-making operations in Scarborough, and now this. Over the last two years, the track record hasn't been great. So based on this, Lord Mayor, I have to question whether the current relationship between the city council and the city trust is really fit for purpose. And I know we're going to have a debate now, but I really think we need to do something to address that relationship. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Smith. We now move to the general debate. The first person is councillor Shafiq Mohammed.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you, Hayley, for bringing this petition to Sheffield council. I think it's important that issues like this are debated, and the citizens of Sheffield actually know where all 84 councillors stand on this issue, not just councillor Fox and councillor Grokot. From my point, I share the views of councillor Martin Smith, in the sense that Roy Chubby Brown is not my type of comedian that I would go and pay to watch. But my view is, who am I to then dictate to the rest of this city what they do and how they actually go about choosing their entertainment? As far as I'm concerned, Lord Mayor, we live in a liberal society, people have individual freedoms, and they can choose to live their life the way they want. And clearly, part of that is to go and watch a comedy act behind closed doors where no children are allowed. And my view is, this is not a new act that's just arrived in this city, Roy Chubby Brown has been coming here for decades. Where were all these politicians that queued up to actually speak out against this act and then went very silent when the media came looking to ask the act for comments? Because today's your chance. Those that genuinely feel they want to ban things, my question is, where do we go from here? Who do we ban next? Because some people are offended by the Prime Minister in terms of what he's said about certain minorities. Others are upset by the former leader of the Labour Party nationally, Jeremy Corbyn, in terms of his handling antisemitism. Jeremy Corbyn, in terms of his handling antisemitism. Does that mean now that Jeremy Corbyn and Boris Johnson will no longer also be allowed to come and address people behind a closed door at the City Hall? Does that then go to rap artists as well? Where does it end? I've listed a number of artists here in this question I've tabled to councillor Fox. Unfortunately, he's not here. I hope councillor Grokot's able to tell us whether Jimmy Carr will be next to be banned or whether Joe Brand will be banned after that, and whether Eminem or others will also not be allowed to attend. Thank you, Lord Mayor.[633.16][633.16](Applause)
Councillor Abdistan.
I'm actually baffled with some of the comments that I've heard today. I've heard over the last few weeks arguments of why Roy Chubby Brown should be allowed to perform, that comedy is an acquired taste, that the offensive can still be funny, it's subjective, if you don't like it, don't go, nobody's telling you not to buy a ticket, and what on earth has happened to freedom of speech? So I wanted to address some of these issues today. Yes, comedy is an acquired taste, but this isn't about pushing views down people's throats, this is about racism. When people use the P-word to refer to Pakistanis, that is racist. When somebody uses the N-word to refer to black people, that is racist. Racism is racism, you cannot get away from that, whether it's a joke or not. A racist is a racist regardless of whether it's a comedian or not. Any argument about free speech does not change that fundamental position. Freedom of speech does not mean freedom from consequence, it has never meant this. Freedom of speech and the right to freedom of expression applies to all kinds of ideas, including those, I accept, those that are deeply offensive, but it comes with responsibility. We are all free to say whatever we like, but it doesn't automatically follow that what we say will be received positively by either the public, minorities included, our funders, our employers, and no does it have an automatic right that people will be given a platform to share their offensive views. Sheffield City Trust is a publicly funded organisation and they recently gave evidence to the Sheffield Race Equality Commission about how they would promote equality. So how could they possibly justify their position of promoting equality whilst then going on to host a racist comedian? They've absolutely made the right decision and I fully stand by the position that they made. Whilst free speech is something to be cherished and absolutely upheld in every civilised democracy, so too is the right to push back against hatred and bigotry.
Councillor, your time is up. Councillor Marouf.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, I didn't even know Roy Chubby Brown even existed until this story broke and I Googled him and realised he was a 76-year-old in the twilight of his career and has been performing in the UK for over 50 years. Have we just realised he exists and performs as he does and we should now be offended? Why do we... we did not realise this before? I asked my family if they knew of him, the answer was no. They do now, like many others. So we have given him a huge amount of publicity. Out of curiosity, more people are drawn to him, a fantastic PR and marketing campaign for him. Lord Mayor, I, along with many others, suffer daily racism, overt or covert. It's part of our lives, you have to live our lives to understand that. I'm a proud Sheffielder, lived here all my life, and still I'm labelled a minority. Why? I will tell you, because racism exists in every part of our society. There are professional people, doctors, nurses, teachers and many, many more who are suffering covert racism. Let's look at our own local authority, do we reflect the community we serve and represent? At many levels, the answer is probably no. I'm afraid many people have hidden prejudices and it makes them feel more comfortable if they covertly object to such people appearing. This is not the answer we need to change ourselves. My view is totally at unison with my colleagues, councillor Shafak Mohammed and Martin Smith. I do not agree with what Chubby Brown says. I will never go to one of his performances, but will defend his right to do so, as long as it's within the law. We should not stop free speech, let people watch what they want and not watch what they don't want. It is not our role as a free society to engineer how people's minds should work and think. How many more people are we going to stop if we don't like the views that they stand for? Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Chin Chan. Give you the right to speak, councillor Fox. Yes, what is your point of order? What is the point of order, though?
Point of order was, councillor Martin Smith raised an issue about Scarborough and Sheffield Trust. This has been established previously that this was a government grant and nothing to do with Sheffield City Council.
So I think councillor Fox is challenging this on accuracy. Councillor Chin Chan.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. The debate over whether Roy Chubby Brown should be allowed to perform in Sheffield is not about whether you agree with the content of his performances or not, it's not about whether you like him as a person, it's about whether you support the fundamental principle of freedom of speech and respect the freedom of choice that the people of Sheffield should have in deciding who they see and who they choose not to see. Sheffield City Trust, backed up by the council, should not be the ones who decide what people in this city can and cannot watch. The people of Sheffield should be the people to decide what the people of Sheffield can and cannot watch. If you don't like Roy Chubby Brown, then don't attend his performances, it's simple. We are supposed to be living in a liberal society and that means giving people the choice to make their own decisions. The real test of freedom of speech is whether you agree, is whether you allow things to be said which you disagree with or which you don't like. The council should reverse their decision to back Sheffield City Trust and restore people's faith in their elected representatives. Thank you.
Councillor, Deputy Lord Mayor, your name's on the sheet.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Roy Chubby Brown, I think we've all actually heard of him, we've heard his song about Alice. He's a comedian and he's a bit of a card, apparently. Well, I take my role as a councillor very seriously and as a councillor, I have a legal duty to promote community cohesion. When I was elected, I signed the Local Government Code of Conduct, which expects me to promote equality across this city. So do I welcome to this city a man who sprinkles his act with the N-word, with the C-word, with the P-word and other abusive language, which we know is offensive to everybody in this city? So no, I cannot support him coming. I cannot welcome someone who insults my friends and my neighbours and all my fellow citizens. Yes, he does have a right to spew his ugly speech. I have a duty as a councillor not to give him a public platform from any of the buildings which this council owns or leases to others. And that is why I think it is incredibly important that we say he can go and he can say all these things behind closed doors and people who go to see him can be ashamed and that's why they have to close the doors. But don't tell me that public money, public venues need to be used for this, this is not the community cohesion that I have been elected to support. Thank you.[1194.58][1194.58](Applause)
Councillor Penny Baker.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I wasn't aware that Sheffield City Trust or Sheffield City Council had the powers of censorship. I didn't know they still existed in any of our portfolios. I did understand that they had the rights of free speech and I do remember one Lord Mayor speaking in the council chamber, unfortunately it's not here today, when told that, "Lord Mayor, so-and-so is talking utter rubbish." The response of that, Lord Mayor, was, "Yes, he might do, but I'll defend till the end his right to speak that rubbish." Now, I would not like, I don't think any of the councils here really like to go and see Chubby Brown, I have an idea of what he says, I've heard snippets of him on the radio and the television, where he is seen by everybody, including children. Not sure I like that either, but I don't think the City Council has got the right of censorship on the right to say who can perform on the stages. As long as it is legal, it is not up to us to tell people what they can watch behind closed doors. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Ben Curran, you're next. Can we have a microphone for councillor Curran, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I hadn't put my hand up or my name down, so I'm not sure why I've been called, but I just want to address some of the rhetoric that's coming out, because like many others, I do value free speech, but I do recognise our role as a council in not giving a platform to it. It wasn't that long ago, we were debating in here and discussing and unanimously agreeing that we need to do more to prevent a culture of catcalling and derogatory comments towards women. Yet on the other hand now, we have people in this chamber saying, "And actually, if a comedian wants to make those jokes that fuels that culture, that's okay." And that doesn't sit quite right with me. We quite regularly in this chamber have debates about racial issues and quite often unanimously come together and say, "We need to do more to challenge it." Yet some of our colleagues here today are saying, "Actually, if people want to pay to fuel that culture, to keep that divide, to keep that division, they're saying that that's okay," and that doesn't sit right with me. You know, there's members of the LGBT plus community who are subject to comments, to jokes, to being put down regularly, the same sorts of things that will be said over and over again in a Chubby Brown performance. We quite often say in this chamber that that doesn't sit right with all of us, all 84 of us, but yet today, some of our colleagues are saying, "Actually, that's fine as long as they don't have to pay to see it." And that doesn't sit right with me. And I want to just challenge them on their sort of change of heart with this right to free speech, because it wasn't that long ago when Franklin Graham wanted to come to the arena, that the Liberal Democrats put their name to a letter calling on SIV to not let him come and cancelled that booking. Why were you okay to stand up then, but not okay to stand up now? Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Ross.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. There's a couple of issues here that have been addressed in the debate. One is the spectacularly bad way it's been handled by Sheffield City Trust. Roy Chubby Brown has been coming to this city for many years and performing in the venues, they knew what his act was like, yet they booked him, rescinded the decision and generated all this adverse publicity. Now, clearly, some members in this chamber are much more familiar with the material of Roy Chubby Brown than I am, because I haven't got a clue what his material is like, but I gather from others, it contains offensive material. If it is that offensive, there is actually a legal recourse to do that, if he is propounding racist, blatantly racist comments, and as they're addressed in that way. It is a very tricky decision, this, about banning things, because as my colleague Shafik Mohammed said, where do you stop? It's a subjective one. Councillor Abdistan answered her own questions, actually, in part, because she said it is a subjective decision and what is offensive to some people isn't offensive to others. We have a very difficult situation here that has been put before us, really, by the mismanagement on top of other mismanagements by the Sheffield City Trust. But fundamentally, we have a duty to make sure that we are not starting a slippery slope towards censorship of a whole variety of acts. Once you open a door to a Pandora's box like this, a lot of things can happen and we need to be very aware of the consequences of starting to ban performers on the stages of Sheffield. Thank you, Lord Mayor.[1535.15][1535.15](Applause)
I'd like now to offer, may Hayley Madden, the opportunity of the right of reply to respond to the matters raised in this debate. You have three minutes if you wish to do so. Yeah, we have run out of time and I am chairing this meeting, councillor. Hayley, would you like to respond?
I'd just also like to point out that the amount of work that Roy Chubby Brown does actually do as well. The merchandise from his shows also goes towards, well, money to charities, one of them being Zoe's Trust, it's a cancer charity for young children. And yeah, that's all I really have to say, really.
May I call upon the Deputy Leader of the Council, Julie Grokot, to respond for up to two minutes and then propose a course of action to be taken in response to the petition? May I remind members that the course of action available to the council, based on the nature of this petition, is either: One, note the petition and take no further action or no alternative action to that already being undertaken for the reasons put before the debate. Number two, refer the petition to an appropriate body or individual for consideration, having regarded to the comments made by members during this course of the debate. Councillor Grokot.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I think we've heard a lot of impassioned messages from members this afternoon and I still very, very clearly stand by my view, my values and my beliefs. Councillor Mohammed Marouf said that he experiences racism, that that's part of his life. That's a really sad thing for me to hear. It's something that, you know, in the 21st century, we shouldn't have to hear and we shouldn't have to listen to. I think it is incredibly sad that he could make that statement as a statement of fact. And so then, when I reflect on the debate that we've had this afternoon and we've heard that people say, "Well, provided it's going on behind closed doors, I didn't really know what this material was like, I didn't really know what Roy Chubby Brown was saying." So how many people don't know, turn up at the venues and then start listening to what has been said? This is very easily how racism, how sexism, how misogynist grows, it's what perpetuates the problem. And I think, as councillor Richards put very well, we have a duty as councillors, we have signed an oath as councillors, that we will look after our city, we will look after our citizens and we will sometimes have to make very difficult decisions. So I think it's really important that we look at what's happened with this. We support Sheffield International Venues, the organisation who have made this decision. And my recommendation, Lord Mayor, is that we note the petition and take no further action. Thank you.[1790.03][1790.03](Applause)
Is that motion seconded, councillor? Is that motion seconded, councillor? Thank you.
Lord Mayor, I'd like to propose an alternative, if I may. But first, thank councillors for the manner in which the debate we've just had. I thought it was a very mature way of having a very, very difficult discussion. I propose that the matter is actually referred to the executive to review the performance of Sheffield City Trust and the governance arrangements that exist with the council to determine whether the current setup is in the best interest of Sheffield. Thank you.
I second that, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. To ask, is there anybody else that has a proposal to make?
That seems to be a totally different issue and not relating to the petition that councillor Smith is proposing there, because this is a petition about a separate issue, that the petitioner has brought, whether we agree with the principles behind it or not. But councillor Smith seems to be changing it to an issue around governance of City Trust and brought in different things that are not related to that issue around the petition. So I'd just like guidance, really, from the monitoring, sorry, the monitoring officer.
May I explain, Lord Mayor? Would that help?
I think that would help, yes.
It relates to the petition insofar as it actually refers to the decision of the Sheffield City Trust, which my understanding was the direct issue that the petition addresses. And as we discussed earlier on, and I appreciate some members may not agree, it's another example in a series where Sheffield City Trust, in the view of some members, have frankly been blundering. And therefore, I think it's entirely appropriate, given this example where they've managed to upset everybody, that the executive reviews the current arrangements that exist between the council and the trust. And therefore, I think it's an entirely relevant and an entirely appropriate proposal. You may not agree with it, but I think it's relevant. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Smith. I'm going to take some guidance from Gillian.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Sheffield City Trust is a separate legal entity, and therefore, any decisions that they take, we don't have the ability to overturn or, you know, advise them on those decisions. However, we have got a relationship with the City Trust, and we do work with them, and I expect that we have a degree of influence over the way that they operate. And therefore, I don't think it's unreasonable for us to have a motion or a suggestion that councillor Smith's putting forward. But of course, it's for you, members, to consider whether you think that's the most appropriate outcome for the petition.
Okay, councillors, thank you. I do apologise. Councillor Dyeron, I'm not taking views from everybody, I'm asking if you've got a proposal, please put it to the floor.
I think the proposal is to reject what the Lib Dems are saying, because they are trying to change what Sheffield City Trust and impose their will by invoking...
Just need to vote against it then, councillor. Okay. Has anybody else got a proposal? No. Okay. We're now going to move to the vote on the motion given by councillor Smith. All those in favour? Yes? Can we just be quiet, please, so that the head of legal and governance can actually call your names out?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. The Lord Mayor, councillor Gayle Smith. Deputy Lord Mayor, councillor Sean Edmire Richards.
Against.
Simon Clement Jones. Richard Shaw. Sophie Thornton. Bob McCam. Chris Rosling-Josephs. Anne Woolhouse. Denise Fox. Brian Lodge. Karen McGowan. Angela O'Genzio. Brian Homeshaw. Calum Rivers. Talib Hussain. Mark Jones. Sophia Said. Douglas Johnson. Ruth Mersrow. Martin Phipps. Tim Huggan. Mohammed Marouf. Ruth Milson. Mazza Ikbal. Mary Lee. Zahira Nas. Jo Otten. Colin Ross. Martin Smith. Victoria Bowden. Moya O'Rourke. Alan Woodcock. Roger Davison. Barbara Masters. Shafak Mohammed.
For?
Fran Belbin. Abdul Kayyum. Abtazan Mohammed. Sue Alston. Andrew Sangar. Cliff Woodcraft. Alexi Diamond. Kate McDonald. Paul Turpin. Ian Auckland. Sue Auckland. Steve Ayres. Christine Gilligan. George Lindas Hammond. Josie Pazcheck. Terry Fox. Anne Murphy. Tony Downing. Kevin Oxley. Peter Garbutt. Muruf Ralph. Alison Teal. Ben Miskel. Jack Scott. Sophie Wilson. David Barker. Mike Drabble. Diane Hurst. Dawn Dale. Peter Price. Gary Weatherall.
Against.
Mike Chaplin. Tony Dams. Jane Dunn. Penny Baker. Vicky Priestley. Richard Williams. Lewis Chinchin. Gillian Grochard. Francine Johnson. Ben Curran. Neil Gibson. Bernard Little. Alan Hooper. Mike Leveray. Anne Whitaker. Mick Rooney. Jackie Sutter. And Paul Wood.
Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. That's lost. So we're now going to vote on the motion moved by councillor Grochard. All those in favour? All those against? That's also lost. That's carried. Thank you. That concludes this item of business. We now move to members' questions.
Lord Mayor?
Questions of urgent business? As far as I'm aware, there are no questions of urgent business, so we will move to councillors' questions. On the first page, councillor Grochard, are you answering questions that are related to councillor Fox?
No, I understand councillor Fox is supplying written responses, Lord Mayor.
Thank you for that. Just so the members of the public know where we are and what we're doing, supplementary questions, written answers from the executive members to questions submitted by members of the council in advance of the meeting, having been emailed to all members and circulated in the venue. And this item of business is to provide an opportunity for members of the council who have submitted questions to ask supplementary questions for each question asked. As the time limit for members' questions is reached, I, oh, sorry, haven't even started yet. I can do that if you want.
Censorship, censorship, Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, in view of the debate just had, would the actual executive member that actually liaises most closely with SCT, councillor McDonald, take the opportunity to speak and actually let us know what her views are in terms of question three? Does she support now the banning of these people from all publicly funded venues? Jimmy Carr, Joe Brand, Jay-Z, Eminem, Boris Johnson, and beloved Jeremy?
I think you might know the answer to that question, councillor Mohammed. No. Your question will be answered in writing. Page two? Are there any supplementary questions on page two? Moving on to page three? Yes, councillor Masters?
Right, it's the questions, councillor Alison Teal. I mean, question one, will you define, will you clarify definition of polluting vehicles? You haven't answered the question. Can you please explain to me what your definition is? Because some of the vehicles operating in our parks and highways are of Euro 6 plus standard, the best currently available. Do you want to ban these as well, or are you just targeting ice cream vans?
Thank you, councillor Masters. It's very puzzling to me why you've asked so many questions about this subject. I think it's fairly clear, from the answer that I've given, that polluting vehicles are ones that emit fumes that are harmful to the health of people, especially toddlers and children with developing lungs. And it seems to me that you're basically cynically misleading the public in the way that you've handled this issue. Don't the Lib Dems care about the health of toddlers?
No, that is not the issue. The issue is how you actually teach, treat small businesses in this city, and the way that you can just disregard their livelihoods. I'm fully aware of pollution. I refuse to have diesel vehicles. I was trying to persuade people not to have them when everyone was rushing to them. I'm sorry, you're talking to the wrong person about this. I'm fully conversant with the pollution caused. I am asking you sort of what your definition is. Is it anything that emits any fumes whatsoever? And how do you then square that with people using Euro 6 plus vehicles? What about the clean air zone? Can you please clarify? Do not digress into the effects of this, what I know.
Okay, councillor, please. Can you please answer the question, councillor Teal?
Not easily, no, because we're conflating a number of issues here. Speaking specifically, this came about because of a comment that I made. A friend tagged me amongst friends on Facebook, "What could we do about this issue about toddlers being exposed to fumes from ice cream, and specifically in parks?" That was all that was being discussed, and we have yet to create any policy at all. And so you've whipped up a circumstance which was completely inappropriate, misleading the public and ice cream vendors. And I think that that is really dire and inappropriate.
If you just bear with me, I will give you your quote on social media, all right? No, I'm sorry.
Quiet, please. Wait a minute, councillor Masters. You've had your answer, I'm going to ask you, have you got another question on page three?
It's on page four, your honour.
Okay, we'll move to page four. Please ask your question, don't make a statement.
Okay. I'm not referring to your comments in May, I'm referring to your comments posted on the 21st of September, which states, thanks to Greens, "The policy will be revised, so that permission will no longer be given to polluting vehicles." This was in the thread that you mentioned in May. Vendors were first contacted by the council, informing them of a change in policy on the 1st of October.
Councillor Masters, I must ask you to ask the supplementary question, please.
Yeah, but the question was, will you explain why it was announced on social media? Is this a way of actually telling businesses that their rights to trade are going to be curtailed? It's the business aspect that I'm shocked by.
Again, I'm shocked that you're cynically misleading vendors, because this simply has not happened. All I made a comment on was my intention to work on this, to find sensible solutions, not to go around upsetting business people unnecessarily. Thank you.
I'm not so bright, okay? You say the information from the council has now come through.
Which question are you asking? A supplementary question to, please, councillor?
Right, okay. You were commenting there has not been an impact assessment because there's not been a decision, okay? But then, sort of, you also comment on the fact that it will be refused with licences. That's what's come through from the council, all right? But many have to tender for their licences next year without knowing any timescale for the proposals. They have been told that due to this, that the tendering policy is being redeveloped, and they have no way of knowing what's ahead. So, you know, it's the reality of the situation. I'm sorry, it's quite difficult when all the answers are, there has been no decision to actually find out why.
Councillor Masters, I'm sorry to keep interrupting you, but can you please ask a question and not make a statement?
Are you right, okay? You say there's been no change of policy. Right, this is difficult, simply because I'm trying to present the case about how the businesses have been treated. So you say there's not been any consultation with the proposals?
Councillor Masters, this is, I'm sorry, I do apologise. I don't like to keep interrupting you, but you need to ask a supplementary question and stop making statements. This is not the platform to make a statement, this is supplementary questions.
Right, question seven, you've taken advice from your social media group, have you actually sought advice or information from the ice cream vendors themselves at any stage, given it's their livelihood? And please don't say there's been no change of policy, because they've been told by word of mouth, various people, that their livelihoods are going to be lost.
Can you answer that, councillor Teal, please?
Actually, it's in my response to the first question that we will do nothing without taking the views of ice cream vendors seriously. We are taking our responsibilities seriously and not dodging them. Thank you.
So will you clarify that with them, please?
Thank you. Page five? Page six? Councillor Otten?
So apologies, Lord Mayor, there has been a clerical error in the question process, that I did submit a question on, also on ice cream vans, I'm afraid. I don't wonder if I could possibly just ask my original question now, seeing as it hasn't been printed in the pack? I was promised that an answer was being prepared, but obviously it was at the last minute, so I don't know. I can ask it, if councillor Teal can't answer it, I understand. Would that be okay?
Councillor Otten, as we have accepted, there was a clerical error, and therefore decided you can ask that question.
So my question, councillor Teal, was, are you aware that the licensing of taxi drivers is a matter for the licensing committee? And would, you know, would you A, defer to the authority of the licensing committee in this area, and B, you know, would you consult the licensing committee before making announcements on the policy regarding licensing of ice cream vans? Thank you.
Councillor Teal?
So I didn't quite understand the question, can you try to repeat that?
Do you recognise that the licensing of ice cream vans is a matter for the licensing committee? And will you defer to the licensing committee in this area, rather than try to exercise cabinet member responsibility over it? member responsibility over it?
Yeah, it's not quite that straightforward as far as I can make out councillor Otten, that it also involves parks and properties. It's, yeah, there's sort of permits for actually having a pitch, the actual land that it's on, so it's not just licensing, there's more to it than that. And that's why it's quite a complicated process that we're working through. Thank you.
Do, okay, I'm confused, but never mind. Are there any questions on page seven? Any questions on page eight? Page nine? Hello, yes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you for the question and the answers here. I've got a supplementary follow-up to this. It was indeed a very successful day at Byron Wood, I attended that active school travel day, and the kids loved it. It's a real steep road, it's on a small back road. What does trouble me though, and concerns me going forward, is the iconic new school, Pye Bank, which sits on top of the hill, that's close to the city centre. And if you go over to the other side of Burngrieving for Vale, you've got lots of roads, lots of schools that sort of bisect Allo Lane. The Clean Air Zone, as it currently is, is likely to displace traffic onto those roads at Rutland and Allo. Now, we've heard here the importance about clean air for young lungs, developing lungs. Those schools in those areas will be disproportionately hurt by displacement of traffic. So what I would like to seek clarification of here is, will the measures for the active travel initiatives, which are widely welcomed, will they be, made sure that they approach and answer the questions for areas like mine, where air pollution is going to be made worse by clean air? And will the scoring as to who gets support for active travel for schools reflect that so that my ward and my schools and my children gain access to active travel for school? And therefore take some of those vehicles off the road should the Clean Air Zone come in? Thank you.
Councillor Teal.
The question, so it's really, it's the schools themselves, it's the principals that can really lead on this issue in terms of the Mode Shift Stars project. And so as a councillor, you might want to approach those principals and explain how you can support them to go through that process, to get those changes and look at their school streets programme. So that's up to the school itself to instigate that. And I'd be happy to provide you with more information if you, if you'd like that separately. Thank you.
Any further questions on page nine? Moving on to page 10. Page 12, yes, page 12. Councillor Wilson.
Thornton, thank you, Lord Mayor. I just wanted to ask a number of questions, firstly on question number one. The number of overdue and incomplete housing repairs has increased by over 800 in the last month. Now, it's been over a year since I delivered a petition of around 900 people saying that we should bring down the waiting times for housing repairs. I've been working on a piece of capes work about a leaking roof for probably the best part of at least two years now. Councillor Paul Wood, you described the situation as a horror show previously, and we thought that we were going to get to some sort of solution as staff vacancies and the services have been, you know, has been filled recently. You said that you were going to, you know, look into subcontracting to help deal with the backlog. Yeah, it has increased by 800 in the last month. Now, can I ask what is going wrong?
Can I just explain councillor Thornton, that we're not expecting councillor Wood to answer questions this afternoon because his voice is very bad and he's not been well. So all your supplementary questions will be given to you in writing.
That's fine, don't worry about it.
Have you got any further supplementary questions?
Absolutely. So, question number three, the average time on the repairs phone line. Now, people have been waiting, the average wait has increased by 15 minutes over the last two months, and the longest wait has increased by half an hour. Now, if you were phoning on a normal phone line, say if you were phoning on a BT standard tariff, that 90-minute phone call could have cost you up to £20. Now, you may have some free minutes, you may not, but that, is that acceptable? You know, are you, as the council are going to prioritise work to bring down the waiting times on these phone lines? As you have a lot of vulnerable people, a lot of vulnerable council tenants wanting some answers as to how they can have their homes that are in disrepair repaired. So what is going to happen to bring these waiting times down?
Any further questions on that page?
Yep, question four. So the number of repairs and maintenance jobs council so far has nearly reached 7,000. Now, there's this constituent in my ward who has been many times waiting at home for his repair to come up. He's lost work over this and they just have been cancelled without notice, multiple times, over and over again. It's been extremely stressful for him because he has a myriad of housing issues in his, in his property. And that's the experience shared by so many council tenants in this city. Now, if you're going to cancel nearly 7,000 repair jobs, can you outline what work's being done to make sure that tenants are being reached and not left without any sort of contact? You know, a lot of the time they're being contacted, maybe one or two times, they've been failed to be contacted. And so their job has been cancelled, but that doesn't mean that their job isn't still needing to be done and leaving them in horrible conditions. So can we improve that, please?
Yes, that will be answered in writing. Have you any further questions?
I've got a question on the next page.
Please.
Yeah, so we've, with the council being aware that it has broken the Homes Act, which is letting out houses fit for human habitation. It says that the cases where we've accepted a breach, so that would assimilate that there have been cases where the council has not accepted a breach. I would like to know potentially how many of them are there? And this breach that it has accepted was on whether the property itself was let out without insulation. So how many properties have we let out in this city that have been uninsulated? Do you think that it's acceptable that we've let out a property without insulation? And how are we going to prevent that from happening in the future?
Thank you. You'll get your answers in writing councillor Thornton.
Thank you.
And to page 15, any questions on page 15? Councillor Evere, have you got any?
Yes, thank you, Lord Mayor. I had a series of questions on.
Can you tell us which questions, is it to councillor Wood or councillor Teal?
Councillor Wood. Question three on page 16. As you may be aware, High Green has had travellers visiting for the last three years. We've sight hardened at the leisure centre and now Angram Bank Park, which is one of the 10% most deprived communities in the city, is now the place of go-to before travellers make their way to Appleby Fair who want to visit Sheffield. We had 40 caravans this summer and it deprives local residents' access to the park facilities and the children's play area. Now, to sight harden this site, which is an open plan park, will be expensive. And I don't think local residents really want their park restricted access to make sure that it can't be used as an encampment. So, you did say we are considering whether a separate need assessment for transit sites is required before the first local plan review. And the transit site could be brought forward through a planning application before this if necessary. Can you confirm that this is going to take place? And also what the timescale will be in terms of looking to get a permanent transit site in this city for travellers? Thank you.
As I said earlier councillor, your supplementary questions will be answered in writing. Questions on page 17? Yes councillor Diamond.
So this is on question two regarding any refugees that are currently homeless, including in temporary accommodation. I just want to check this because I don't think this is accurate. There are often refugees that have to overstay in their home office accommodation because the council hasn't managed to find them a place in temporary accommodation. And temporary accommodation is also classed as homelessness, and I know that people have been stayed there for months, if not longer. So I'd like to query that one. Can I move on to the next page?
Thank you.
Can I move on to question four on page 18? About, question four and five about asylum seekers currently homeless in Sheffield. Everyone probably here is aware that asylum seekers are refused asylum even when it's not safe for them to return to their country of origin, and they are made homeless and destitute by the Home Office. So will the council commit to supporting asylum seekers who are made homeless and destitute but have no way of getting home to their country of origin? Because it's simply not possible, as with the case in Afghanistan and other countries such as Eritrea. And finally, just on question five on relief duty and homelessness for refugees, please could we have a meeting to discuss this, including employees of Sheffield City Council, to find ways that the council could be more proactive so that people are supported within the 28 days and are not left homeless when they reach the end of the 28 days? Thank you, that's all.
Thank you. As I said earlier councillor Diamond, your supplementary questions will be in writing. Page 19. 20. 22. I heard a voice, but I didn't, oh, councillor Ross.
Thank you. Question two on page 24. I welcome the fact that you have acknowledged that the, you're in support of the neighbourhood plans. The decision taken in October 2018 to redefine local as the whole of Sheffield is of questionable legality. No other council in the country, as far as I'm aware, has done this. And the idea of the SIL retention at 15% was to ensure that the money was retained locally to compensate the community for the development that's taken place and make the development more acceptable. So, will you review the decision that was taken in October 2018, given that the administration of this council has changed?
I understand that you have a motion coming later on this afternoon in relation to SIL money, and I wouldn't want to be making any comments that would prejudice the motion one way or the other councillor Ross. Thank you.
As it's very low on the agenda, I think it's highly unlikely that we're going to get to speak to that agenda, so that was quite a neat way of avoiding the question. I will try with question three to see if I can elicit a response. You say that when the decision was taken in October 2018, there were no neighbourhood plans in existence at the time, therefore they weren't taken into consideration. Given that there were at least three neighbourhood plans in advanced preparation at that time and had been consulting with the planning department in the council, it was not very far sighted in that decision to actually not plan for neighbourhood plans being in existence. And clearly now this affects the Be Best area as well as the Doh neighbourhood plan. You refer to the internal working group. Can you give me information on this internal working group? Who does it comprise of? Is it members? Is it officers? Is it members and officers? If there are members on, will it be politically balanced? When will it report? And who will it report to? Thank you.
Thank you councillor Ross. We're in very early stages of putting that together. There is some funding that is, we're hoping that will be available so that we have a dedicated officer who will be able to work with members in relation to this. So as soon as we have that detail and information available, I will make sure that you get it. Thank you.
Page 26. Page 27. Page 28. Yes councillor Woodcraft.
Thank you, thank you Douglas, with regard to your response about parking blue badge vehicles on Clark House Road. Now, the council website clearly states that blue badge parking holders cannot park on cycle lanes. And this is also true of the national website. Now, I accept that you say that blue badge holders can legally park on Clark House Road cycle lane as its only advisory. This isn't clear to most people. So are we going to keep this little secret between the two of us? Or are we going to make this available to the public so that they can benefit? Thank you.
Councillor Johnson.
Cliff, you weren't meant to tell anyone, we're meant to keep that between the two of us. I think the fair answer is that an advisory cycle lane is about as much use as the council website at the moment. Frankly, the website's not up to date, as we all know, since it was outsourced, and a cycle lane that you can park cars in is a bit crap.
I accept your apology councillor Johnson.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, I've just had a look from the monitoring officer, so yes, apology is definitely in order.
We're having a break soon, you can discuss that then. Anything else on page 28? Page 29?
Yes, please, Lord Mayor.
I can hear people but I can't see them. Oh yes councillor Smith.
Thank you for your answer councillor Johnson. It's very clear the council isn't obliged to carry out an equalities impact assessment for changes to public transport routes. Does, even if it's not obliged, does the council look at the equalities impacts of changes to public transport routes? And if it doesn't, do you think it should? Thank you.
Yes, thank you, yes. The reason the answer's set out like this is because it's a bit of an urban myth that, you know, by law you have to do equality impacts assessments on everything, and you don't. The legal duty is to have due regard to a number of things, you know, like advancing equality of opportunity, eliminating discrimination of the types unlawful, and promoting, fostering good relations between different groups of people. So that's what it is, not to have the, do the tick box exercise. I think I've been fairly critical of the standards, some of the impact assessments of the council in the past, understandably. But yes, the impact assessment is a way of complying with legal duty, but actually, yeah, the legal duty is very important when it comes to public transport changes because they're very much tied up with accessibility for disabled people. But also lots of other things relating to various other protected characteristics. So yeah, they will need to be carried out. They don't have to be done in that standard form that the council often uses, which I think could be improved.
Does that mean we don't actually carry them out at the moment? Sorry, that was the question.
I think, I think it's been patchy to give you your second supplementary answer.
Any further questions on page 29? Councillor Huggan.
In relation to the question, when the business case is complete, are you going to stop looking and start doing with this electric charging?
Might have to wait and see. On electric vehicle charging, I mean, it's a bit of a, bit of an issue, it's very easy to jump to conclusions about what works, partly because as a, as the market is changing quite a lot, the technology is changing quite a lot, and there's, you know, quite tricky issues about what's happening with, you know, the electric car market and how desirable that is. Because you've got to remember that encouraging people to... Because you've got to remember that encouraging people to buy more cars, even if they're electric, does cause, you know, air pollution from particulate matter and congestion. So it's not a simple answer. So there's a bit to be done there. But, yeah, hopefully something will get done at some time, to be specified later.
Any questions on page thirty? Councillor Huggan?
One of the things, question two, can we have a policy around electric provision for bicycles? Because in some of our district centres close to my heart, in Crooks, where we have a lot of cyclists, and in Brumhill, it would be a good starting point to start providing some electric provision so that people who no longer can drive to these, to Brumhill particularly, can actually have the ability to charge their electric bikes, which are ever more, there are ever more on the roads.
Yeah, yeah. The part about the answer is that you don't need special charging infrastructure, charge electric bikes, you plug them in. It's like charging a phone, really, until you try and put it back in your pocket. But, I mean, you, you. It's not like, it's not like an electric car where they need a special installation.
Any questions on page thirty? Question, page thirty-two?
Lord Mayor.
Oh, sorry, did I, was that thirty-one, councillor? Yes, please ask your supplementary question.
I'm on, I'm actually, sorry.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Other local authorities have pilots for on-street electric car charging. Why can't we develop our own, have our own pilots rather than following the pilots of other local authorities elsewhere in the country? Surely Sheffield should be, a city the size of Sheffield should be a leader in on-street electric car charging rather than a follower? Thank you.
Yeah, no, thanks. I mean, it's a, it's a fair question, which of course you've already asked here. I mean, other authorities have done things in different ways. Some have tried to take on on-street car park, electric car charging, and some haven't. And York's got an interesting policy where they go through all the reasons why it doesn't work terribly well. But, yeah, it's something actually that is being worked on at the moment, to work out, you know, what we do need in the way of charging infrastructure. So it's an ongoing bit of work and probably will relate to the things I was referring to in, in respect of councillor Huggan's question.
Thank you. Page thirty-two?
Lord Mayor? Thank you. Thank you for your answer, councillor Lindas Hammond, and this is a really important issue. Clearly, following the closure of John Lewis and Debenhams for various reasons, clearly the pressure on availability of toilet facilities, particularly for the elderly and those with medical conditions, is far greater. And I know you say the bid team's going to look at new members. Is there anything the council can actually do itself in terms of just other than asking others to open facilities? Is there any chance we could look at some of the shops that we've got in the city centre that have been vacant for a while? Whether we could look at providing some sort of facilities in those? Just an idea, it's something to go away, George, it's not necessarily commitment today.
And I appreciate, thanks for the question, it's a, it's a very fair point. I think I answered this question today, particularly, Terry's probably the person, if he were here, to really give you that really good answer about the way the city centre development can benefit this. But I do think, you know, from a point of view of disabled and vulnerable people, your point is really good, I think. It's something we were looking at pre-pandemic, I think it's something we need to turn to again now that, you know, as part of our reopening plans. So although I'm not got any responsibility necessarily for what happens in those empty buildings, I will certainly talk to colleagues about what, you know, what can happen, and I'm happy to have a further conversation with you about that. Thank you.
Councillor? Any, any other questions on page thirty-two?
Yes, Lord Mayor, please.
Councillor Ayers?
Yep, I'm genuinely grateful to councillor George Lindas Hammond for the very detailed response to my question, questions regarding the Star feat, the feature that appeared in the Star about requests for care being turned down and the number of people that died while waiting for care. I say I'm very grateful for the detailed response to the figures. The question is actually on page thirty-five, where the, I asked about the safeguarding cases to try and establish what were due to self-neglect. And I see that the row at the top of page thirty-five, the figures are quite high compared with the other categories, that and neglect. I just wondered whether councillor Lindas Hammond could offer his thoughts on why that might be the case.
So, councillor, just to confirm, it's the self-neglect column that you're viewing as particularly high?
Yeah, self-neglect row, but also the neglect row as well seems quite, those two rows seem quite, quite high. But the self-neglect is the, is the highest.
I'm afraid I'm going to have to get back to you in terms of a detailed answer, but one thing I would say is that the core of safeguarding Anilton City is looking at two things, which is abuse and neglect, as you know. So clearly neglect is a, is a really, really key category that we want to be looking at incredibly carefully when the reports come through. And what we have had is a lot of challenges with ensuring that all the reports we get are dealt with really properly, and I'm really pleased to say that we've made huge strides in doing that. But I think I will have to give you more detailed response in writing, sorry, of the particular category you're referring to, if that's okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Are you got any further questions on page thirty-five? Page thirty-six? Page thirty-seven? Thank. I just want to say that we did have apologies from councillor Simon Clement Jones, and I failed to read his name out, so if I could have that put into the minutes, please. There was a page thirty-eight, but we're going to pretend it doesn't exist. Okay. I think it's now time for a comfort break, colleagues. Can we just take fifteen minutes, please? This item, and I call on councillor McDonald to move the motion. You may speak up to three minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Council, after more than a decade of austerity, this council, together with others, is facing an unprecedented pressure on our budget. That's why I am calling for the government to recognise the vital role of local government and use the spending review to come up with a fair and sustainable solution to local government funding. The pandemic has put our communities and services under unbelievable pressure. Some groups and communities continue to be adversely affected by the impact of Covid. The evidence is clear across the country. For example, the Centre for Mental Health estimates that ten million people, yes, ten million people, will require support for their mental health over the next three to five years as a direct result of the pandemic. A hundred and fifty thousand of these are children. Like many other councils, we can see the impact on our social care services too, with a big increase in demand. The recent government announcement about health and care funding did nothing to address the mounting pressures in the social care system or provide stability for the social care sector. Analysis by the Institute for Fiscal Studies estimated last year that an immediate injection of one point five billion pounds was needed for adult social care, and this was even before the current pressures. Under the Tories, many in our communities are facing financial hardship. Today is a dark day for our welfare system. At the same time as we are facing increases in inflation, energy prices and taxation, over five million people will lose the much-needed twenty-pound universal credit increase, and hundreds of thousands of families and children will be thrown into poverty. This is a total disgrace. Many more vulnerable people will require support from the public sector, and as councils, we will be there for our communities. We need more funding, not less, to respond to the challenges we are facing. The evidence is clear. Prior to the pandemic, councils had already dealt with a fifteen billion cut in our budgets since two thousand and ten due to austerity. The Local Government Association have estimated that councils need an additional six point seven billion pounds next year just to meet increased demand and the costs of providing the same level of services. Without an increase in government funding, this would require an increase of eight per cent in council tax. And even then, this wouldn't be sufficient to respond to the new challenges that we're facing. Here in Sheffield, since two thousand and ten, we have suffered cuts in government funding of four hundred and seventy-five million pounds, a cut of almost a third in real terms. I am proud that Labour has predicted adult social care and children's services throughout this tough time.
It is time, councillor.
However, it is clear from pressure on our budget, we are facing the toughest challenge yet. So today, join me in calling on the government to use the opportunity of the spending review to provide a fair, sustainable and sufficient long-term funding settlement for local councils. Enough is enough. Thank you.
May I call upon councillor Chaplin to second the motion? You may speak up to two minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, for giving me the opportunity to second this motion on which councillor Kate McDonald has spoken so eloquently. I'd want to make the contrast with the last eleven years of this squeeze on public spending on local authorities by Conservative and Conservative coalition governments, with the Liberal Democrats and others, with the privately sorted away wealth that's been stored in offshore tax havens, one of them being the British Virgin Islands. The clue is in the name that it's connected to Britain. While this is encouraged, and there's plenty of banks in the city of London supporting this, we are left cash-strapped with not enough money to support our people, particularly the most vulnerable and those that are poorest amongst, among us. The latest Pandora Papers show that four billion has been sorted away, and among others they name a key Tory party donor among them who have benefited from that. Previous to that, we've had the Panama Papers and the Paradise Papers back in two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen. So evidence of this is very well documented. Sheffield is not alone in facing the budget shortfall that we face this year. Conservative councils like Surrey are facing a similar amount, forty-seven point one million. Hampshire, another Conservative council, sixty-five point nine million. Just to give you two other councils, Cheshire and West Cheshire, smaller, but they face a twenty-six million pound shortfall. And while the risk to us is, is high in Sheffield, Newcastle are facing a shortfall of ninety-four million pounds. Like the rest of the local government, we face increasing costs, higher demand and greater pressures.
Time, councillor.
I've got there. Right, thank you very much. I would ask you to support this motion. Thank you.
Okay, there are two proposed amendments, and these are number one and two on the list of amendments circulated at the meeting. Can I call upon councillor Mike Leverie to move the amendment number one? You may speak up to two minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. On the third of March, council approved a balanced budget of four hundred and twenty million pounds. An increase of fifty million against the restated twenty-twenty-one budget, which had been impacted by Covid. The adult social care budget increased by fourteen per cent, three per cent ahead of the average increase over the previous three to four years, as a result of the three per cent council tax preset. Yet, just six months later, we face a potential budget deficit of forty-four million. The deputy leader in March made it clear that we will use reserves carefully to protect essential services in the short term if further government funding reductions occur after two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two. When recommending a balanced budget to council, the question is, why, having set a balanced budget, are we facing an overspend in excess of ten per cent? The portfolio pressures were set out, as were the savings. None of the savings in twenty-twenty-one were realised due to Covid, and all passed forward to the budget for this year. Are they achievable? A funding gap of seventy-two million over the next four years was predicted twelve months ago, and if the cover of overspend isn't addressed, this funding gap will almost certainly double and possibly treble that figure. We need an urgent six-month financial review, which addresses the overspend, minimises the impact on reserves, challenges which, after all, are required for the challenges beyond this year. Time to address the challenges rather than playing the blame game. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
May I call upon councillor Shafiq Mohammed to second the amendment, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, this is yet another example of this Labour-led council mismanaging the finances. If this was because we were in the middle of the pandemic, we knew the circumstances. I can accept that in two thousand and nineteen, twenty, we weren't aware of what was going to happen, even in the two thousand and twenty-one budget. But what about this year? We knew what the circumstances were, and halfway through the year, we're now faced with forty-four million pounds overspend. So clearly, something's not worked. The robustness of the sign-off of the budget, in terms of the savings suggested and the budgets allocated, clearly have led to this. Now, where do we go? Clearly, we have to make a case for government and ask for government to bail us out, but we have to also look at ourselves, and that's why I want to speak to the section L in our amendment, that despite the pressures, despite all the pressures and forty-four million pounds, the sacred cows are still there to be protected, the subsidised tax trade union officials, the thing that this Labour council, Labour-led council now will never, ever touch. They will continue to pump money into these instead of protecting vital services. Clearly, council spin doctors are still being protected and spending millions on consultants. So clearly, yes, there's a challenge, but in this financial situation being made worse by the choices that this Labour-led council has made. So here's your chance to actually power it tight frontline services and get up and make this announcement that that long-running campaign that we've led, that no more will this council subsidise trade union officials when trade unions are swimming in money. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
May I call upon councillor Diamond to move the amendment number two? You may speak up to two minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. We must reject the false narrative of austerity. Austerity is an economically illiterate policy when judged by its stated aim. The true purpose of austerity is to redistribute wealth from the poorest to the richest in society. This is proven by the massive increase in inequality and the billionaire boom that has occurred since the financial crash. The Green Party is the only major political party to consistently oppose austerity from two thousand and ten through to two thousand and twenty-one, and is now the only party which unequivocally rejects austerity and the false narrative that government budgets are like household budgets. Locally, the crushing austerity inflicted on Sheffield, which has seen thirty-one per cent budget cuts since two thousand and ten, has meant disinvestment in our people and environment when we need to invest more. It has seen the sell-off of public assets to It has seen the sell-off of public assets to private interests, the worsening of pay and conditions, pensions and layoffs, and hollowing out of democracy, and goods and services were outsourced, and we became tied into poor value for money, poor quality, long-term contracts with companies whose primary motive is profit. Sheffield cannot afford to make cuts to any more services. We are already struggling to meet our statutory obligations. There are multiple crises in social care, primary care, homelessness, mental health, early years provision and SEND provision, to name but a few. The most vulnerable people in society are already falling through the gaps. This winter, more people than ever will have to choose between heating and eating. As prices rise and relative incomes fall, the furlough scheme ends and universal credit is brutally cut, all of which will mean more demand on council services and finances. As a council, we must be loud and clear in stating that austerity has always been a political choice and not an economic necessity. And we must give people hope there is an alternative, and we must work with other councils to demand that there is proper investment in our communities and environment. We must do everything to ensure that jobs are protected and look at flexible ways of working rather than voluntary redundancies and early retirement, so that the burden of savings to budget is spread equitably and skilled workers are not laid off. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. May I call upon councillor Paul Turpin to second the amendment, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I joined the Green Party in 2014, and that was largely because the Green Party was the only party still objecting to austerity. The four main parties, including UKIP of the day, all in favour of austerity, all in favour of Renewing Trident, all in favour of Fracim. And now, seven years later, we see that, well, we've beat Fracim, so if we can beat Trident and stop austerity, then my time in the Green Party will have been worthwhile. So 11 years of austerity, there's young adults today who don't know anything else, whose lives have been impacted in a way that the generation before them wasn't, with their opportunities for education, their opportunities for work, for better housing, gone from austerity. The transfer of wealth into private hands from public hands is obscene, and by squeezing local authorities such as ours, force them to sell their assets that they do have. You only get to sell the family jewels once. The government could end this. It could end this today. It could end it tomorrow. The will with which it spent money in the pandemic shows it could end austerity, it could tackle a climate emergency if it chose to do so, but that, of course, doesn't line the pockets of the Tory donors. So to that end, and I kind of wish I'd put it in the amendment, do you think that we can get the chief exec to make a donation to the Tory party and then they'll give us loads of money? Second this amendment, Lord Mayor. Thank you.
We now move to the debate on the matter. May I remind members seated on the floor that when I invite you to speak, it would assist if you could stand so that we can easily be seen by the staff delivering the microphone. Thank you. Also, the staff delivering the roving mic, if each time you invite a member to speak, you could give notice, I would give notice of the next person to speak. So the first person I have on my list is councillor Drabble.
Oh. Well, it's all right.
And she's got her own microphone.
Oh, God, it's me getting my mic.
It's okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm going to lay my cards on the table. The forecast for the cost for our children and families here in Sheffield next year is £110 million. We're expecting a settlement of £87.4 million. That leaves a gap of £22.7 million. Funding gaps are nothing new to us. Councillor Mohammed, you started these back 11 years ago, so your hands are really, really dirty on this. Right now, we are reaching a crisis point with the cancellation of the uplift in universal credit, the end of furlough, rising energy costs and the cost of food. It's going to push so many families over the edge, and that is why we have been investing in early intervention. We've done this as a matter of choice, a political choice by this Labour administration in previous years, and it will continue, as I know, under councillor Macdonald and the rest of my colleagues. We've done this through public health, general fund and grant funding. And why have we done this? Because it works, and this is reflected in the fact that we have fewer children in care than other local authorities. We have, unlike Sheffield, has a good Ofsted report, unlike other cities such as Bristol, Liverpool and Birmingham, which requires more improvement. That is because we don't just deliver statutory duties. It is a choice, it is a choice that we have challenged at every opportunity. I have got papers down here of letters that I have written to government, constantly challenging them. We have to continue to challenge, because while we are doing this by investing, we are building confidence and skills and resilience that these families are going to take through them to the rest of their lives, which is going to break cycles of neglect and abuse. And by reaching out early, I mean, children are not going to be hiding under their beds where they fear their father beat their mother. And they are scared of being left alone, because that is the difference that we have made by investing and by using our general fund and by taking it forward. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
I think it was councillor Mick Rooney. Did you have your hand up? Right, I'm going to disband that list that I've been given.
No, he's not on my list.
Well, who's Mike then? Down. Councillor McGowan, you can stand up and speak. Is I dismissed?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on this motion today. I was elected in 2010, and I have only ever experienced cuts being made to Sheffield by this Tory government. I, like all those that have come on council after me, have never experienced anything but budget cuts. This year is worse than ever, as the council is again having to absorb government funding cuts and meet increased costs from pressures such as inflation and demand for services, particularly in social care. This has amounted to £475 million, which in real terms means a 31% decrease in the council's spending power. We are now in a position which really frightens me. We are facing an overspend of nearly £44 million. This has been caused by the additional spending on council services needed to respond to the pandemic, such as support for families and older people in need and the sudden end of Covid-related funding from central government. Where is the government in supporting our most vulnerable in our communities? I want to take this opportunity to highlight what this means for the people in Burley Ward that I represent. I know many of our wards across the city have had to rely on our fantastic community groups. They have pulled together to help us keep our communities great places to live. In Burley, like across the city, we have volunteers from litter-picking groups to those providing lunch clubs and running our libraries, and I would like to pay tribute to them all for the hard work they do. They all play their part in giving my ward and our city a real community spirit. We, as a Labour administration, never wanted to have to rely on volunteers, and my fear now is, how much more are we going to ask of them? Burley has the second-largest elderly population in the South East, and I'm very concerned about how this is going to impact on them and the most vulnerable in our community. We regularly get casework asking for road safety measures to tackle speed and issues with parking. We get requests to provide more things for young people to do and to improve our playgrounds and green open spaces. It is frustrating that we struggle to tackle the issues that are important to our residents because of these cuts. So I support this motion, calling upon the government to use this opportunity of the 2021 comprehensive spending review to provide sustainable and sufficient long-term funding for councils. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Joe Orton.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I wasn't going to speak in this debate, but I'd just like to make an observation, I suppose. We have this kind of debate on a regular basis, certainly as long as I've been a councillor, which is 10 years now. And we say how terrible it is that there's not as much money coming from the government and how that's a moral outrage. And the politics in our country has reflected this kind of debate that we've had, that the Labour Party to some extent generally has said that austerity is an outrage. The Greens clearly say austerity is an outrage. And it hasn't won any elections, and the party that's delivered all this austerity has now got a councillor in this chamber again. And so perhaps, maybe, you know, obviously, my party's in a slightly different position to you guys, but maybe we're all going about this the wrong way. Maybe the way to persuade the government to provide funding for Sheffield that we need is not to talk in terms of moral outrage, but to say what we could usefully do with that money that would make us more economically vibrant, more independent and so on and so forth. So maybe, you know, we do this all the time, it's not worked, maybe we should go about it a different way. Maybe councillor Chinchard would like to contribute to this debate and tell us what he thinks would be successful in bringing a bit more money into Sheffield, because, you know, his view's probably even more interesting than mine. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
I'm afraid he's not got time, because that's the end of the debate. We're now going to give the right of the reply to councillor Macdonald, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I just want to respond to three points. Firstly, the idea of a six-month review of our budget. Hello? I started reviewing this budget month one, not month six. That's what a well-managed council does. Similarly, I'd like to respond to councillor Shafak Mohammed, and just remind him what one of his colleagues said at overview and scrutiny committee last year when we were discussing the budget. This council is a well-managed council. And thirdly, I'd just like to respond to the Greens. You're in cloud cuckoo land if you think that you're the only party that is challenging austerity. This Labour council, this Labour party will fight against austerity every single day. On that point, Lord Mayor, I'd just like to remind people, I'd like them to vote for my notice of motion. Thank you.
I'm now going to move to the vote on amendment number one, moved by councillor Mike Leverie. Are members happy to vote on the amendment as a whole or in each separate part? Yes. Can we get a microphone, please, over here?
In voting for the amendment, I'll be voting against parts E to H.
Thank you. Anybody else voting in parts? No? Okay. All those in favour of amendment one, please show your hand. All those against? I'm now going to move to the vote on amendment number two, moved by councillor Diamond. Are members happy to vote on the amendment as a whole or do you want to vote on each separate paragraph?
Can we vote in parts, please, Lord Mayor? In voting for the amendment, we are voting against O and Q.
Okay. All those in favour, please vote. Thank you. All those against, please vote. Are there any abstentions? That is carried in part. We're now going to move to the vote on the substantive motion. Are members happy to vote as a whole or in parts?
Lord Mayor, in voting against, we'll be voting for A to D.
Can we have a microphone, please?
So in voting against, I'll be voting for B and N of the original Labour motion and abstaining on D, E and L of the original Labour motion, and voting the same way as I did with the amendments.
Thank you. Somebody there?
Too quick. That's good. In voting for the substantive, we are voting against the original Labour's H, J and M.
All those in favour of the substantive motion, please raise your hands. Thank you. All those against? Thank you. That is carried in part. We now move to item seven on the agenda, notice of motion regarding energy. There is a maximum time of 25 minutes for this item. May I call upon councillor Tim Huggan to move the motion? You may speak up to three minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm pleasure in introducing a motion which, if we play our part in Sheffield, will be another component of a transition to a more sustainable future for us and ensure that Sheffield does its bit. This does not preclude any of the array of other measures that need to be taken to combat the climate emergency that we face. When I worked in the high-voltage electricity sector, I saw how much bureaucracy was needed, not just for the building renewables like solar farms, wind turbines and aerobatic digestors, but just to access the grid. The Local Electricity Bill gives greater freedom for locally-produced energy and a right to supply. Currently, when you see a renewable project, it will allow us to see the link of our own use of energy and how we produce it. If there is more freedom and innovation allowed via the Local Electricity Bill, there will be a direct connection without the access charges and a loss of electricity in the process. Support for this bill will remove some of the barriers to renewable energy generation. This will give Sheffield a chance through any emerging local plan to embed some of the policies that will guide us to a sustainable future. The Local Electricity Bill supports community electricity and innovation by smaller companies and enterprises and community organisations. This would allow people, through whichever form, to play a direct part if they so wish in creating a sustainable local source of electricity. This will allow greater direct build infrastructure investment into Sheffield if we embed it into our local plan. It allows local communities to generate their own electricity, generated by renewable means in a variety of different ways, and cuts out the steep access charge and bureaucracy that is currently needed to access the grid. With battery storage coming on stream, I mean, there will be the ability for electricity, for instance, generated on the roofs of warehouses, to feed their excess renewable electricity generated to local homes or neighbouring units. With appropriate planning policies in place, we can give the ability for new or existing communities to have wind turbines, solar enterprise on-site, owned and led by local groups, small-scale enterprise and enterprising innovative companies. This would allow communities to see a real benefit to the mini and micro generation of electricity close to home. If we are to change the way we live, we need to take everyone with us on a journey to carbon neutrality. The potential benefits are substantial. If this motion is passed, it will remove some of the barriers to renewable energy generation and will be another part of the jigsaw to a sustainable future. I ask you to support this motion.
There are three... Oh, sorry. Councillor Martin Smith to second the motion, please. You may speak up to two minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. In seconding this motion, I just want to highlight the tremendous opportunities that the Local Electricity Bill could provide for innovative companies and community organisations in Sheffield. Removing the restrictive financial costs associated with accessing the national grid is an absolute game-changer. For example, if the council or another local organisation were to set up an energy recovery plant linked to a food waste collection scheme, for the very first time, they could receive the full value... the full value of the energy generated for local use, rather than pay the national grid for the privilege to connect to their system. And I'm sure many other examples exist. Lord Mayor, I'm confident that Sheffield has a wealth of organisations that could exploit the proposed legislation, and therefore I second this motion.
Thank you. There are three proposed amendments, and these are three, four, and five on the list of amendments circulated at the meeting. I now call upon councillor Mark Jones to move the amendment number three. You may speak up to two minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And I welcome this motion. We've already had a petition-
We can't hear you, actually. Can you move the microphone closer to you?
Is that better?
Can we have another microphone, please?
Oh, it's working now? Yes. I think it just took a while to reconnect. Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'd like to welcome this motion from councillors Huggan and Smith. We've already had a petitioner here today, and we're in an unusual position of, again, probably breaking out into consensus. We all welcome this. It is a cross-party thing at Parliament, and I think it should be a cross-party thing here in this chamber. And from looking at the amendments, both ours and others, that is very much the case. In bringing forward the local electricity bill, we can start to address some of the pressures that we're going to have within our fuel supply, within heating and powering our homes. And yes, it is critical in terms of decarbonising our household stocks. However, and my amendment here is not to diminish yours, it is to add to it, as you've rightly said, councillor Smith and Huggan, there are other measures that we must do. It is really, really critical that we make our houses more efficient. We will need to push forward on insulation, and that is a fundamental part of this thing that we're putting here. Also, we can look to set in place the local electricity supplies, and we can look to get them established. It is likely to take a while. What we're looking to do here is to embrace alternate technologies to help fill that gap, including putting in hydrogen, including putting in biogas. We are seeing the national grid renewing our gas supply chains across the nation, putting new plastic piping in the ground. There are schemes ongoing using upwards of 20% hydrogen to give a greater calorific outcome. We have seen today a 37% increase in gas wholesale prices, which is going to push all those put-smoke providers of energy under. We must act now to make sure that our citizens are able to heat and not have to choose between heating and eating. And on a day when the disgraceful Conservative Party cut £20 off universal credit and forced more and more people into making that false choice, I am looking at the Conservative in this room, shame on you. We must act now to support all families across Sheffield. I urge everyone here to support our motion. Thank you.
May I call upon councillor Missgill to second this amendment, please?
Lord Mayor, residents in my ward face rising energy prices, queues at the petrol pump, and news of soldiers driving tankers. Some residents have even received notification that their energy provider has gone bust. All this at a time when 51,000 Sheffielders are £1,000 a year worse off due to the government's disgraceful cuts to universal credit, and the energy security of our nation has never been more in jeopardy. Amongst all this instability, much of which has been caused or exacerbated by our withdrawal from the European Union, this Tory government has squandered its opportunity to plan. It's been asleep at the wheel. Instead of using the opportunity of COP26 to be a global leader on sustainable green energy, the Tories have failed to plan for a green future and failed in their duty to safeguard some of the most vulnerable in this city from rising energy costs. Lord Mayor, as this amendment makes clear, a significant part of this government's failure is its failure to insulate homes. We must demand that this government take immediate action to insulate, as doing so will drive down sky-high energy bills and make us collectively more sustainable as a city. Lord Mayor, it's time for the government to step up and acknowledge that those that disproportionately face the brunt of the energy crisis in this country are some of the most impoverished. It really is time for action. Heating or eating isn't a choice, and we need the government to act now.
May I call on councillor Johnson to move amendment number four. You may speak up to two minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And I just want to say, actually, of course, I'm very pleased that we've got a real issue about climate change on the agenda again, and that there's a good deal of cross-party support. You could say it's a bit of a no-brainer, really. It's natural that we should all be supporting what's being pushed through Parliament to generate more electricity by renewable means. But it's also a chance for us to look at what could be done in Sheffield, and that's possibly the slightly trickier thing. We often emphasise the need to act locally as well as looking at what's happening on the national level. It has been picked up by others, but of course, one of the big obvious omissions here, I said omissions, not emissions, one of the big omissions here in the original motion is the more techie way of looking at the need to produce more and more energy by renewable means, and omitting the need for insulation. And there is always a danger with anyone who wants to come up with something to, you know, solve the climate crisis, that it's all going to be this sort of magic tech thing about things are going to be developed in the future. But actually, home insulation, building insulation, is a pretty low-tech thing that works. It means about not using the energy in the first place. If you're not using the energy, there's even less the worry about where it comes from. And of course, as a council, we are in a unique position of having, actually, lots of houses, lots of buildings, that we can put insulation into. It's incumbent on the government to supply us and lots of other public bodies with enough money to invest in that, because that is what makes a real difference in the future. And it's about a win for climate and also a win for people who live in homes, live in council housing across the city. And of course, it will be especially felt by those who are suffering the £20 cut in their universal credit today. It makes a huge difference. Insulation can really save lives, in a literal sense. That said, on renewable energy, there is more that we can do. There is more we can do, but I will stop there. Thank you.
Councillor Teale to second the amendment. Well, it's, thank you for telling me. Councillor Garbutt.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and apologies for not informing you. I won't take much of your time. Our amendment seeks to establish the retrofitting of buildings to reduce demand as a major commitment alongside the provision of renewable energy. It also seeks to add the important sector of community energy, which councillor Huggan mentioned briefly, to this motion. It's to be noted that this is a win-win situation. Not only will it address a significant part of Sheffield's CO2 emissions, it will also help Sheffield's households keep their houses warm more affordably, in a way that renewables themselves cannot. They can produce electricity, but they won't keep houses warm. I recommend this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. I call upon councillor Masters to formally move amendment number five, please.
Formally moved, Lord Mayor.
Call upon councillor Andrew Sanga to formally second.
Formally second, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. We now move to the debate on the matter. May I remind members seated on the floor that when invited to speak, it would assist if you could stand so that we can easily be seen by staff delivering the microphone. Thank you. Are any members wishing to speak? Councillor Masters? Councillor Sang-
Thank you, Lord Mayor. The climate emergency is here now. We agree action must be taken to drastically reduce our carbon footprint. Fuel poverty is a cruel reality for too many in this city, and it will get worse. The cost of reducing our reliance on fossil fuels falls disproportionately on those least able to afford it. This is why our motion matters. The drive for clean energy generated sustainably means we need to look at ways that do not rely on the vagaries of the weather or political priorities elsewhere. Other local authorities have understood this. Some already have in place measures to generate low-carbon power to meet the increasing demand for electricity. Why haven't we done similar? My amendment asks for us to explore innovative ways of generation using resources already on our doorstep, and I offer two examples showing local power generation is achievable, affordable, and can work on different scales. The first extracts the heat stored in the water that fills old mine workings to generate electricity. These are bound in our region, so why not use them to help repair the damage their creation set in train centuries ago? The heat supply is constant, independent of the weather, or a steady supply of materials, and the coal authority wants to engage in the process. The second uses lamp posts found everywhere. Turbines designed as spinning cylinders attached to lamp posts power the lights and potentially generate enough energy to sell back to the grid. They are driven by the movement of vehicles. The turbines can be leased rather than purchased, reducing risk to local authorities. This approach would fit with our substantive notice where innovation must be tempered by financial risk. I note that some other power generating measures are proposed in Labour's amendments. Excellent. So can we have food waste collection implemented? No, please. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Andrew Sanga.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I mean, I think it's good that we have largely cross-party working on this. The climate emergency is here, the city has collectively set a target of 2030, and that means to decarbonise completely. And that's a complete change, a complete change of how we generate our electricity. But also, as this motion talks about, it's also about how we heat our homes. Just changing our transport, just changing the way we generate electricity is not enough. We have to decarbonise heating as well. This city has a proud tradition in terms of its district heating network, and as we move to zero carbon, we need to use that infrastructure. Let's not waste the investment of the last 30, 40 years of this city in terms of both the large district heating system, but also the smaller district heating systems that we have. So, Lord Mayor, there's a lot going on. The local electricity bill, which has got cross-party support, we need to support that, as we heard in terms of questions at the start of this council meeting. The city does innovate. This is an opportunity for Sheffield people, for businesses that start up, but also for communities to get behind local generation of renewable electricity, but also the insulation schemes. So there's lots of opportunities for winning here, but there's also opportunities in terms of reducing people's fuel bills and for moving to a zero-carbon city by 2030. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
I haven't, councillor Lodge? It's your turn.
Thank you. It just comes down very quickly. Thank you, Lord Mayor. And it's very interesting to listen to the speeches that are going on here, and the need to look at innovation in the way we do things. And as councillor Masters was saying there, there are turbines that operate now that are placed in places where they're in central reservations that generate electricity, as vehicles are going up and down, and things like the motorways could do that, the Sheffield Parkway. Sheffield, and forgive me, colleagues from the South East who will have heard me say this last week, Sheffield is where it is because of the rivers that powered the tilt-hammers, that powered the forgers, that powered the grinding wheels that were out there. And surely, in this day and age, we should be looking to make better use of our rivers and of the natural resources that are out there. The city is built on the rivers. It's in a basin, the water is coming down, and surely we ought to be able to manage that a little bit better and use that. There's other things that are happening throughout the country with innovation, not just wind turbines on lamp posts and things. There's a square in London where there are kinetic pavements, where if you walk on the pavement, you are generating electricity. And that is used during the daytime. It plays birdsong in the square that's down there, but in the evening, it powers the lights that are out there. So these are the sort of things that we need to be looking at. Sheffield was at the forefront of clean air back in the 70s, and we ought to be at the forefront of generating renewable sources and using renewable sources of electricity. It's great that we're all talking and getting behind this, but we really need to start working better together to start getting these systems in place. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
You're welcome. So the right of reply, councillor Huggan.
I just want to say a few words. Obviously, I hope that we're going to support the motion. My points are, energy efficiency deserves a motion in its own right, actually, because some of the poor drafting of one or two bits of the Green Amendment seems to only include community-led energy schemes, means that we're not necessarily bringing in private business and enterprise into the schemes, because though these schemes will be cheaper, they are not cheap, and they're a considerable barrier via capital. So we have to make sure that anything we put as a motion towards our local plan, towards being part of a local plan, that we are a city that is open and attracting enterprise and investment into the city for these schemes, to put Sheffield at the forefront of this. And so I urge you to support the main part of the motion.
I'm now going to move to the vote on amendment number three, moved by councillor Mark Jones. Are members happy to vote on the amendment as a whole or in each separate paragraph? Speak now.
Lord Mayor, in voting for, we're against P.
Thank you. Councillor Chinchan?
Lord Mayor, is that on? In abstaining on the Labour amendment, I'll be voting for RS and U, and against K and P.
Thank you. That's okay. All those in favour of amendment three, please raise your hands. Thank you. All those against? Any abstentions? Thank you, that's recorded. Yes, that's clearly carried. I'm now going to move to the vote on amendment four, moved by councillor Johnson. Are members happy to vote as a whole or in parts?
Lord Mayor, if I may, in voting for, we are against two, against seven L, and abstaining on five and six.
Thank you.
Lord Mayor, in voting for, I'll be against two and abstaining on five and six.
Thank you. All those in favour of amendment four, please raise your hand. Thank you. All those against? Any abstentions? That's carried. Going to move to the vote on amendment number five, moved by councillor Masters. Are members happy to vote as a whole or in parts? All those in favour? Thank you. Any against? Any abstentions? Making my life easy. Sorry, I haven't got my microphone on. All those in favour of the-
Sorry, substantive, Lord Mayor, I do have voting in parts.
Let me finish this sentence, councillor, for goodness' sake.
I thought you were calling for raised hands. Do you want to, can I, it is the same as we did on the amendments, so against P of the Labour amendment- it is the same as we did on the amendments, so against P of the Labour amendment, against two and seven L of the Green Amendments, and abstaining on five and six of the Green Amendments.
Did you get that, Paul?
Lord Mayor, just to confirm, in voting for, I'll be voting as I did on the amendments.
Thank you. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Thank you. Any against? Any abstentions? That's carried. It's twenty past five, so we now move to item number eight, notice of motion... somebody shouting? Sorry. Notice of motion, crisis in social care. There is a maximum of 25 minutes for this item, but not today. May I call on councillor Lindas Hammond, please? You may speak for up to three minutes. And actually, you don't need to stand if you've got a microphone.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Raising national insurance is a fundamentally really unfair way to tax for social care. But to start positive, on an equal allocation of the total £12 billion, Sheffield could expect around £120 million share, not nearly as much as taken by the Tories from this city, but enough for us to start investing in priorities such as paying care workers better and building communities that are resilient against the effect of ill health alongside the brilliant voluntary sector we have. But rather than trusting councils to invest in high quality social care, the Tories are doing two things to ensure that we, as councils, get very little. The first is to give the majority of this money to NHS and reallocate it to social care later. I love the NHS, and it needs money, but I can promise you that once that money flows into the NHS, they will rightly spend it, and it will be completely impossible to remove it again in the way that this government intends. And secondly, they're introducing a care cost cap, and the less talked about increase in the capital limit that people pay. And our brilliant officers are doing the really complex job of estimating the cost of this policy, this council, and the even harder job of explaining to me the perverse impacts this scheme could have. And in short, the reduced income for the council and the extra administration involved could cost councils like Sheffield in the tens of millions, and currently, there is not a penny of extra money promised from the government. This is not the solution we are promised on the steps of Downing Street. The costs of this cap look likely to exceed any additional income councils will receive, and it is incumbent on all of us today to yet again sound the alarm for the future of the service in the city for our most vulnerable citizens. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Richards, you may speak for up to two minutes, but I think you're going to formally move this.
I would just like to endorse everything that my colleague councillor Lindas Hammond has said, and formally second this resolution.
We're very close to the end of time, and no one... yeah, there are two proposed amendments on these, on this, item six and seven. Councillor Steve Ares.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. In the next 10 years, as the number of people living alone and away from family support grows, it's predicted the number of people requiring informal care will rise to 3 million. So the need for less complex care rises along with the demand for social care providers. Meanwhile, social care has the biggest staff turnover rate of all job sectors in the UK at around 30% per annum. In Sheffield, that's 36%. And we see Guardian reports of care workers elsewhere quitting for better-paid jobs at Amazon. Now, that must be a concern to us as a council and as a major source of employment. Coincidentally, I see the report on home care transformation going to Transformation Committee tomorrow acknowledges that probably nearly a third of the sector don't see care as a long-term career, which in turn may affect dedication and receptiveness to upskilling and advancing within the service. I think we'd all agree that anybody who looks at social care would call for a long-term funding solution and a fairer deal for our unpaid carers. And I've done both on many occasions, but in the environment we operate in, we also need to address some of the systemic issues locally and ensure existing, albeit limited, funding streams, like Skills for Care Workforce Development Fund, for example, is accessed by providers and spent on career progression, in-work support, and diversity of the workforce at senior levels to boost the esteem of the caring vocation. But as a council, we also have a duty to act as the voice for our unpaid and family carers, who are too busy juggling care with work and family life, and too often struggling to make ends meet, that they don't have the time to speak up for themselves. So finally, our amendment calls on the government to raise the carers allowance by £1,000 a year and not by the miserly £5 a day that they announced in April. Councillors, please support our amendment. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Marouf.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Bearing in mind the time limit that you set, I'll just... I support the amendment brought forward by my colleague councillor Ares. But I would like to bring one thing to the attention of members, and that is the role of extra care villages. It was this city many years ago that invited officers to go and have a look at extra care villages in places like Warrington, and we did bring an extra care village into this city at Brinswick, at Woodhouse, which has been extremely successful. And we did have plans to roll this out in Milouses, Walkley and Pejo. I had other things to talk about, Lord Mayor, but I think that is an important thing. We were innovative at the time, to the extent that we even had an operator from Acapulco coming here, talking about bringing technology into the care world as well. So I think if we resurrect that and bring it back again, it might be something that we can build on, Lord Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Because of time, I'm going to now ask councillor Phipps to formally move his amendment.
Formally moved.
Thank you. Councillor Holmes, can you formally second?
I'll formally second.
We're now going to move to the vote on amendment number six, moved by councillor Ares. Although... oh, do we want to vote in parts?
Yes, please, Lord Mayor. In voting for this amendment, we are voting against H.
Thank you.
Lord Mayor, in abstaining on this amendment, I'll be for I and M and against L.
Thank you.
Thanks. In voting for this amendment, we're voting against H.
Thank you. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Thank you. Any against? Any abstentions? That's carried, but paragraph H is lost. I'm now going to move to the vote on amendment number seven. Are members happy to vote in parts or as a whole?
Lord Mayor, in voting against, we'll be abstaining on I and for H.
Lord Mayor, in voting for this amendment, we will be voting against K.
Lord Mayor, in abstaining on this amendment, I'll be for H.
Thank you. All those in favour, please raise your hand. That is carried, but paragraph K is lost. We're now going to vote on the substantive. Are members happy to vote on a whole or in parts?
So in voting against the original motion, I'll be abstaining on F and G of the original motion, and I'll be voting the same way as I did in the amendments. Thank you.
Lord Mayor, in voting for, we will be voting as we did before on the Green Amendment.
In favour of the motion, please raise your hand. All those against? Any abstentions? That's carried. We now go to item nine, notice of motion, doing more for the armed forces, community. I'm afraid we haven't got time to debate this, so can I ask councillor Chin Chan to formally move?
Formally moved, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Penny Baker, can you formally second?
For democracy, yes, Lord Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. There are two proposed amendments for these, and that's eight and nine on your list. May I call upon councillor Hurst to move amendment number eight?
Formally moved, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Can I call upon councillor Lodge to second that?
Formally seconded, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Paul Turpin, can you please formally second your amendment number nine?
I can formally move the amendment, Lord Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councillor Johnson, can you formally second?
Formally seconded.
Thank you very much. Are members happy to vote as a whole or in parts?
Lord Mayor, in voting...
Oh, I'll tell you which amendment it is first, then you'll be able to make your mind up. Sorry about that. Number eight, I do apologise, I've lost the will to live, I'm tired.
In voting for, I'll be abstaining on E to G.
Sorry, what did you say, that councillor? Okay. Thank you. All those against? Any abstentions? We're now to move to the vote on amendment number nine. Are we voting in parts or as a whole?
Yes, please, in parts, Lord Mayor. In voting against, I'll be for J and then Q through to T, and abstaining on the second part of N, O and P.
You should have been listening. Okay. All those in favour, please show your hands. Thank you. All those against? Thank you. Any abstentions? Thank you. That is lost. We're now going to vote on the substantive. Are we voting in parts or as a whole?
Lord Mayor, just to say, I'll be voting as I did with the amendments. Thank you.
Are you okay? Okay. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Thank you. All those against? Thank you. Any abstentions? Thank you. Not long. Item number 10, the making of Dorr Neighbourhood Plan. Councillor Grokot.
Formally moved, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. I should explain what we're doing. This item of business is to approve the recommendations in the report of the executive director, place the results of the Dorr Neighbourhood Plan referendum, and outlining the steps to be taken in consequence of its outcome. And the report was published with the agenda for this meeting. The motion to note the outcome of the neighbourhood plan referendum and to make the Dorr and neighbourhood plan such that it is adopted as a planning document as part of Sheffield's Strategic Development Plan is to be moved by councillor Grokot, thank you, you did that, and seconded by councillor Johnson. Councillor Johnson, can you please second that?
Formally seconded, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Joe Otten.
Formally moving the amendment, Lord Mayor.
Formally second the amendment, Lord Mayor.
Yeah, you're doing my job for me this afternoon. Thank you. So we're now going to move to vote on amendment number 10. Councillor Otten, can you formally...
Formally moved, Lord Ben.
oh, sorry. All those in favour of amendment 10, please show your hands. All those against? That's lost. We're now going to vote on the substantive. Are we voting in parts or as a whole? Okay. All those in favour? Thank you. All those against? Any abstentions? That's carried. Item number 11, updates to the council constitution. This item of business is to approve the recommendations in the report of the Director of Legal and Governance, providing details of changes to the continuation of constitution as a result of the establishment of the local area committee, transitional committee and the governance committee, and changes to the number and remits of scrutiny and policy development committees in the municipal year. The report was published on the agenda for this meeting. Councillor Grokot.
Formally moved, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Johnson.
Formally seconded, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Joe Otten, can you formally move your amendment, please?
I formally move, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Alston, can you formally second?
Formally seconded, Lord Mayor.
Thank you very much. We're now going to... Yeah, thank you for that. We're now going to move to the vote on the amendment number 11. Are we voting in parts or as a whole? There aren't any parts, so we'll just vote as a whole. All those in favour? Thank you. Any against? Thank you. Any abstentions? Now going... sorry, substantive. All those in favour? Thank you. Any against? Any against? Any abstentions? Item number twelve on the agenda, members' allowance, report of the independent remuneration panel. This item of business is to approve the recommendations in the report of the executive director resources, which provides details of the recommendations from the independent panel on the members' allowances scheme. The report was circulated to members of the council and published on the council website towards the end of last week. The motion to approve the three recommendations in the report and to authorise that the new special responsibility allowance be backdated and payable from the date that members were formally appointed to the role is to be moved by councillor Grochot.
Formally moved, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor, and formally seconded by councillor Johnson.
Formally seconded, Lord Mayor.
Thank you very much. All those in favour of the motion, please raise your hands. Thank you. Any against? Any abstentions? That's carried. Item number thirteen, minutes of the previous council meeting. It is proposed that the minutes of the meeting of the council held on the 16th of June and 7th of July be approved as a true record of accuracy, subject to alterations of the recorded vote set out in paragraph 10.3.1 of the minutes of the meeting on the 16th of June, to show that councillor Lewis Chin Chen abstained from the voting on part A of the amendment concerned and voted for part B of that amendment. Is that formally moved?
Formally moved, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Is it formally seconded?
Formally seconded, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Item fourteen, represent... Oh, sorry, do you all agree?
Yes.
Thank you. Item fourteen, representation of the authority and related issues. It is moved by councillor Diane Hurst, seconded by councillor Gary Weatherall, that approval to be given to the changes in membership of committees etc., the appointment of representatives to serve on external bodies and related issues as detailed in the schedule circulated at this meeting. Councillor Hurst.
Formally moved, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Weatherall.
Formally seconded, Lord Mayor.
I'm now going to move to the vote on the motion. All those in favour of the motion, please raise your hand. Thank you. All those against? Any abstentions? The motion is carried. It is time, colleagues, that we had a vote of thanks to former colleagues. I'm sure you all agree that this is well about time. So before we conclude the meeting, I wish to move now a vote of thanks for services provided to the council by former councillors. This is something that we should have done previously since the local elections. May I therefore propose that thanks of the council be given to former councillor Andy Bainbridge, David Baker, Jack Clarkson, councillor Dagno, Julie Doh, Jackie Drayton, Adam Hurst, Bob Johnson, Bob Pullin, Jim Stike, for their hard work. I would also like to include on this the more recently Alan Law resigned from the council due to ill health, and therefore we should add his name to that list. I am very conscious that there are councillors in that list that we would all like to speak about, but it's now October and we've not been able to fit this in. So my colleague on my right, the deputy lord mayor, suggests that I say to you all, if you have something you would like to say about any of these colleagues or all of them, we would ask you to do it in writing, and that will be added to the list of minutes, and I will personally send a letter of thanks to those councillors, telling them what you all have said, but what you've written really. So please, we welcome you telling us what you want us to say on your behalf. Can I ask for an agreement on that? This concludes the business for today, you'll be pleased to hear. Thank you very all for your attendance, and thank you for having patience with me today. Thank you very much. Stay safe and a safe journey home.
See you, Lord Mayor.
Oh, yes. Oh, yes. About time. So, colleagues, I'm having a civic service on Sunday. It's four o'clock in the cathedral. I would love some of you to come if you can find the time. Please be there promptly, because the service will start at four o'clock. I'd love to see some of you there. Thank you very much. Good afternoon.